St. Clair Shores City Council meeting to order. Abby, please call the roll.
Mayor Walby?
Here.
Councilmember Burtis?
Here.
Councilmember Karen?
Here.
Councilmember Frederick?
Present.
Councilmember Rubella?
Present.
Councilmember Rusi?
Here.
And Councilmember Vitale?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is proclamations and presentations. And first up is Eagles Aerie 3619 proclamation, 50 years old. I think we got the past president, the current president, maybe John, Joe, come on up. Good evening. How are you? All right. Why don't you stand on this side? Well, I like to read usually with on both sides, on both sides of me. And then let me, I'll read the proclamation, then you guys can introduce yourself, and then we'll even talk a little bit about the Eagles. How's that sound?
Okay.
We'll get the mic for you. I'll give my glasses. Proclamation to the St. Clair Shores Eagles Aerie 3619 in honor of their 50th anniversary. Whereas mayor council, the city of St. Clair Shores deem it fitting and proper to publicly recognize and express our pride and appreciation to the St. Clair Shores Eagles 3619 on the occasion of celebrating their 50th anniversary as a generous part of the city. The St. Clair Shores Eagles is a local division of the Fraternal Order of Eagles, an international nonprofit organization of volunteers dedicated to making human life more desirable by lessening its ills and promoting peace, prosperity, and hope. The Eagles, formed on April 20, 1975, has performed community and civic service on behalf of the national and local charitable causes and contributed financial support to the American Cancer Society, the National Alzheimer Society, the Muscular Dystrophy Association, Turning Point, the Ronald McDowell House, Maggie's Wigs for Kids, and many more. Whereas they have adopted Bryce Park, cleaning it monthly for the past three years from spring through fall, volunteered at the Goodfellows Paper Drive, participated in the St. Clair Shores Memorial Day Parade, great float this year, and Halloween Fun Fest, and supported our first responders and active military personnel with first-year free membership. Whenever there has been need to help in the city, county, state, or our country, you will see members of this organization not just writing a check to provide aid, but rolling up their sleeves and jumping in to help. And this year, as they celebrate their 50th year, we are honored that they call St. Clair Shores their home. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and council of the city of St. Clair Shores, on behalf of all its citizens, extend our sincere congratulation and appreciation to the St. Clair Shores Eagles Aerie 3619 on the occasion of their 50th anniversary and say thank you for your support and dedication to our community and wish many, many more years of continued success. Congratulations. Thank you. Which one of you fine gentlemen are going to speak? All right. And Joe, you can hold that. Introduce yourself, and Joe.
My name is John Alexey. I'm the current president of St. Clair Shores Aerie 3619. And my cohort here is...
I'm the junior past-worthy president, Joe Romats.
Now, this is indeed an honor for me. Public speaking is not anything I've ever done well. In fact, I've dropped two classes in college because I had to give a speech at the end of the semester. And as ironic as a 50-year anniversary is, I've been president for a total of one day so far.
You've got the hot seat, eh?
Yeah. I found out out in the hall that I had to be speaking. But it is indeed an honor, and I hope we continue to serve the city of St. Clair Shores well and be the best Eagles we can be. And thank you so much.
Well, you've served us well for the last 50 years, and I know you'll serve us...
And one day, you know.
One day. I meant the whole Eagles as a general, so we expect another 50 good years. Joe?
Just want to say thanks for this. This is, wow. One thing about, I can say about 3619 is we're a family with the ladies' auxiliary. It's, yeah. And we're really, really happy to be a part of the city.
And we're happy to have you.
Thank you, sir.
So, all right, so you, we got, they're all going to come up here, and we're going to take a picture. Right? Who's going to take the picture for them? We got all the Eagles. We'll need a picture. Taker.
I have. I got it.
There you go. Thank you, Stephanie.
Stephanie.
The library director here. Stephen up.
They're coming down.
All right.
Hey, I'm sticking with the class. I understand. Two presidents together.
There you go. All right. Just make sure we get everybody, city everybody here, okay?
Ready?
Yep.
36.
19.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Nice to see you. Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
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 I know you got it.
You were there?
Yeah.
I probably handed it to you.
You probably did. Thank you all so much.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
See you, Rick.
Thank you.
See you later.
But you got a big award, too.
Yeah.
I did.
Yeah, you're like the eagle of the year.
Eagle of the hour.
Yeah.
See you in a few weeks.
Get a good, big voice. Be a singer.
Yeah.
Or a radio announcer.
Update with the postal carriers and the big fundraiser, the fund drive, the food drive. How are you?
Good, Mr. Mayor. I'm doing very well, thank you. My name is Ron Zaleski. I am the food drive coordinator for St. Clair Shores. I've been, I've delivered the mail in St. Clair Shores for 27 and a half years, the last four of which I've been honored to serve City Hall amongst this whole entire area here. And I am the president of Michigan State Association of Letter Carriers. I come here today to give an update on the food drive. First, I'd like to thank everybody from St. Clair Shores who sat food out on their porch. Our total for this year was 34,217 pounds.
Wow.
And that's about six tons more than we collected last year.
Wow. Fantastic. There you go.
The weather really had an impact. It was sort of dingy and dark and kind of rainy last year, and this year we had a beautiful day, and people just were very generous, and they weren't afraid to put the food out on the porch for fear of it getting wet because there was no rain. I also want to thank the members of council who came to help us sort. It's great that we have the support of the elected officials here in St. Clair Shores. I really appreciate seeing you guys down there. I'm not going to embarrass you with your names tonight, but it's great to have you there. Thank you so much. But like I said, most importantly, thank you to the citizens of St. Clair Shores for supporting our cause and supporting the needy people within St. Clair Shores and across Macomb County. Our union local is called a branch, and our branch represents South Macomb. And across Southern Macomb, we collected just over 200,000 pounds of food. All of that goes to the Macomb Food Program, where it'll be redistributed to neighborhood food banks so that people can get through the summer. And especially with the schools being out and the lunch programs and breakfast programs not always being in service, this is going to be really important for a lot of needy people, both across the county, across the country, and here in St. Clair Shores. So thank you to everybody in the shores, and thank you to our elected government who supports us so, so well. Thank you.
Ron, I just want to say, I think this is the last time you were, you're about ready to retire, and I don't think you brought your replacement in last year, so I want to seriously, on behalf of the city, thank you for what you've done, the effort you've put in, and you've changed people, you've made a difference. And, you know, I don't think there's much more that can be said when, when you walk out and you've made a difference than you have. So we really appreciate the hard work you have done at the post office and, as I said, made a difference. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the city of St. Clair Shores and all the customers I've had over the years. It's been a very rewarding career, and this is just one of the many rewarding aspects of it.
Enjoy your retirement. You earned it.
Thank you. End of the month, let's all cross our fingers. No. I believe the last of the paperwork is in, it just needs to be approved.
Take care.
Thank you.
Cerise, update. They come annually. Tony, come on up. How are you?
Good, thanks. Good evening, everybody. I appreciate your time tonight and having me once again. I believe this is your number three that I've been able to present the accomplishments and goals that we have set for ourselves. Within your packet, you'll find the 2024 annual report. It provides an overview of our operations, how we are governed, and some accomplishments that we've had over the past year, as well as some annual statistics. Some things that we're proud to report on that I'd like to highlight in there. As you may recall, last year, we did some restructuring within our leadership team. And due to this, we've been able to expand our quality assurance program, where we are reviewing more random calls by supervision. You'll see in the statistics, we process, you know, 120,000 calls per service every single year. That's, that's, that's quite a number. So to be able to review every single call is, is not impossible. I'm sorry, not possible. But we do provide a significant review of calls where we are identifying trends, deficiencies. And because of that restructuring, now with the training manager, we can better address issues as we find them versus waiting for complaints. Proud to say that we remain an accredited center of excellence for our emergency medical dispatch. There's a little piece in there that it's, it's quite noteworthy to read. We still remain one of only two dispatch centers in the entire state that hold that accreditation. So I believe that that proves our commitment to excellence as we serve your residents. With help from the local 911 surcharge, we were able to replace some workstations over the past year. There is a capital improvement section within that report that you'll see pictures of what it used to look like, the transition to what it looks like now. It goes a long way when it comes to making improvements where our dispatchers sit for 12 hours, sometimes 16 hours a day, to have a clean, modern working environment where technology is right, they're ready to go and not outdated equipment. We've also increased our training over the last year. A lot of that has to do with a dedicated training manager. But we were able to send dispatchers to 26 different classes that enhances their skills over the year. That's an improvement of 16 classes for the year prior. So I think that's quite noteworthy. Looking ahead, we remain committed to expanding our mock call and dispatch training. This is one-on-one scenario-based training that we can do right in the center that we don't have to send people out to. We put quite a focus on our low-frequency, high-risk type call scenarios so that when the, when the terrible calls come in, we're prepared and ready to handle those as if they happen every day. We're also committed to ensuring that we are technologically advanced, meeting the public's expectation in terms of our capabilities. I'm proud to report we're one of few centers within Macomb County that's already ready for the transition away from a copper legacy 911 system to an ESNET that's coming hopefully this year. That's a countywide initiative that all nine PSAPs, Public Safety Entrancing Points, within the county are transitioning to as a whole. That's where fiber is being laid throughout the county. Connections are being made for a secure network that increases our capabilities of the type of 911 data that we can receive. If you have any questions about that report or any questions on our operations as a whole, I'd love to take those tonight. Would also love to have you guys in. I know a few council members have come in and taken tours and seen our operations. Had a significant renovation project this year, as well as the council updates that you see in your packet. To see it firsthand and to see what a dispatcher sees every day and what their capabilities are, canon goes a long way with the majority of people that come in and visit. So I welcome those and welcome any questions that you have.
Thank you.
Mr. Rubella?
Yes, thanks for coming. Reading a little bit about this, you guys have a wonderful website, so I would recommend anybody who might be listening to this, get on your website. Lot of, lot of information there. Stressful type of situation jobs and safety first. I was just wondering, looking through that, you seem to be getting like longer calls, like when people are on the line and more calls. Can you tell us some of, some of that?
Sure. You're referring to the call duration, like on page 10? Sure.
Yeah, that was sort of interesting.
It's variable every year. You know, it's, it's an average of what we have. As our staffing levels have increased, we do have the ability to stay on a line with callers longer as they're waiting for emergency services to arrive. So it's not as simple as just finding out where a caller is and dispatching help. A lot of times we'll receive what we call post-dispatch instructions. So a call taker may be gathering information, and a coworker or partner of theirs in the background will be sending help at the same time. That's not always apparent to the person on the other end of the line while they're answering questions. Help may already be on the way. But with the ability to put more people in the room, we have an ability to stay on a line longer with callers, particularly with high priority incidents, to keep them calm and prepare the scene for responders to arrive. So that may very well be a strong variable in that. It looks like it's gone up just a number of seconds from the last couple of years, but you know, that could very well be a reason for that.
And anyone, I guess, who's listening, Cerise, here, we're, we're talking about, you know, city of St. Clair Shores, East Point, Fraser, Roseville.
Correct.
So these are for calls going out. And the other thought, thing I thought was sort of neat was your Smart 911, like for safety profiles.
Smart 911 is, we try to do a lot of public education on this. It was a state-sponsored program. It's a piece of technology that is somewhat becoming outdated as more and more information is accessible through a media device. But what's a Smart 911 profile is, is you can register it through smart911.com, register your phone number with, say, your house, and it's all up to the subscriber, and it's free to use on a consumer basis, on the user end, that you can put in any medications that you believe might help responders. If you have any dogs in the house, if you have an autistic child, you can upload a picture of that child so that if the child is, is missing, you know, respond, we can, we have the ability to send that pictures to the police officers so that they can be looking for that child prior to going to the house and then gathering family photos and then going back out and doing a search. So little things like that are beneficial through that program. It's just smart911.com, and it's very intuitive how you can register yourself. Then information's valid for one year, and then it expires. That way, we don't have, you know, continuously outdated information.
Yeah, I guess as a councilperson up here, we want to know, A, is there anything we can be doing to, to help out Cerise a little bit better? And overall, is it, is the system better than it was last year?
That's our goal.
Are we making progress?
That is our continuous goal, is the ever-improvement. I do believe with the dedicated quality assurance manager position, as well as training manager, we have dedicated personnel now that are focused on those particular items, improving our quality of service. When it comes to council support, just allowing me to be here goes a long way. Coming and touring our center and letting our staff see that you guys have interest in, in our public safety role goes a long way.
I guess I might add that our, our, our police chief is your finance director still?
Yes, and actually, Mr. Walters here is our controller, handles a lot of our financial work, strongly assists or directs and leads, like our auditing process through Plant Moran every year. So if you have any finance questions, we do have an audit, a published audit that I can give your way for review.
Thanks, Mayor. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. First off, thanks for being here again. It's nice to have these annual visits and updates about how the services are being utilized and the improvements we've been seeing. I know I tend to be on the various resident groups quite frequently, and so I tend to pick up on a lot of people's various complaints and questions and issues they have out there. And I haven't seen any really related to Cerise recently. So I think it's been, at least adamantly, I've noticed the service keeps improving. So thank you for providing that to the residents. It's really nice to know that we have a professional service ready for when the emergencies happen or residents need to get help to themselves or someone else quickly. Just one question. Under statistical overview, what states text to 911 appears to grow slightly as public education grows. Is Cerise doing the public education, or the individual cities, or public safety departments doing the education? Who is gaining word out there about the text to 911 services?
We try to go everywhere that we're asked. We have a running number of things that we attend. We try to do national lineouts, fire department open houses, police department open houses, you know, things like that, where we'll set up a booth and we'll bring people in. We try to show up at schools, job fairs, things like that. I will say during COVID, a number of years even thereafter, public education was lacking. So not everybody knows the capability of receiving text to 911. We still preach to call when you can, text if you can't. There are use cases where texting is more valuable or safer for the caller to use, but information can be gathered much more efficiently in an in-person phone conversation. But any invite that we have, we'll do our best to attend and, and do public education so that we're seen in the public.
We have a very productive communications department. We put out a newsletter, we have a city Facebook page, things like that. Maybe we, the city could work with them on, if you have any announcements or that type of information, we could utilize our resources to help spread the word to our residents too about the availability of those services.
I believe I have her contact from last year. We put out just a little snippet, and then we're waiting for the countywide conversion to our ESNET to really explain to residents what that actually is and how that changes 911 capabilities throughout the county.
Okay, that would be, yeah, great if you keep up the communication with administration on making sure we get that information so we can distribute it to the people.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Burgess?
I, I was going to ask about the tech scene too and the education. What would cause somebody to want to text instead of call?
The first thing that really comes to mind is if somebody has broken into your home and you're hiding in a closet and you don't want to be speaking because you don't want them to hear you, you could be texting details of where somebody might be in the house, what you hear them saying, things like that while still staying secluded.
That makes sense.
I mean, heaven forbid something like that happen, but things like that occur. In more remote areas, texting is, is more prevalent. I don't know if you've noticed, if you're up north and you don't have enough service to make a call, a lot of times a text will go through. So things like that help in much more remote areas than ours.
Thank you.
Mr. Vitale?
Yeah, appreciate the emphasis on the 911 in those scenarios, but I'm afraid I am going to have to be a bit of the voice of contrary here. You'd be, were in front of us last year, and I spoke of an incident with a dispatcher where I needed a police officer dispatched because I had someone that was destroying property at a building. And the dispatcher became honestly rather argumentative with me because I couldn't give her the name of a business. Well, the building's a warehouse, there's no sign on it with the name of a business. There hadn't been an operable business there for 10 years, so there was nothing to, to tell her, and she became quite argumentative that I wouldn't give her the name of a business. So I had hoped maybe that was something that was addressed in terms of the quality assurance. However, if you could maybe take some notes here on this, we had an incident that occurred in one of our parks on Sunday afternoon.
Blossom Heath, I'm aware.
Okay, so you're aware of this because what I have from one of our department heads said, the threat of physical violence, officers were called. I have alerted and included the chief, deputy chief in this email as there were some issues with dispatchers that delayed police response. I will make contact with the deputy chief and go over this in more detail on Monday. I don't know what the outcome of that was, but I got to tell you, we ask a lot out of our park guards to tell people things that they don't want to hear, and I want to know that if they need backup, they're going to get backup fast. And I think that's important so that people don't try those things either. Do you know anything about?
I absolutely agree. I told, I spoke with deputy chief McCowser about 3:30, 4 o'clock this afternoon about that incident. There was some, I want to say aggravating and mitigating circumstances surrounding that. There was some confusion based off of data that was coming into us. This also came in right at shift change. There was a call before that was handled very well, and then there was a call after where there was assumptions that the night shift dispatcher knew exactly what was happening, which, which created a couple additional questions. I'm not going to say that we did that call very well, and that call is under review.
Okay.
Talk about the address, though. There was an issue, right? There's also an address with the issue, which I think that's an important point, Tony, that you and I talked about.
So, yes, yeah. When that phone number at the guard shack calls 911, it, it tells us that it's at City Hall.
Okay.
So right off the bat, we're asking additional questions to try to gather where this is occurring. And just saying that it's at Blossom Heath Park, it's a large area, we're also going to inquire, well, where in the park are you? So that was a technological factor that probably delayed response and added confusion as well.
Okay.
I know that's quite common when it comes to VoIP-type services, and I'm not sure if that's what you have out at the parks or in your city buildings. Whatever's on file through Comcast or whatever provider you may have is what displays to us, and it's up to that vendor to keep those addresses up to date so that when you call 911 and somebody doesn't know the address, we know exactly where, right where they are immediately.
Would it have been better if they had used a cell phone in that instance?
A cell phone would pin, show on a map within a geographical radius, and again, there's other factors that play into that, how strong your, your signal is on your cell phone at that point. But probably would have, probably would have assisted a little bit, yeah.
Dustin, you were saying so?
Yeah, and we did it with IT late this afternoon as well, and they're working on trying to make sure that they can get that address to where it actually shows up at Blossom Heath too, so we don't have to worry about the address showing up at City Hall.
Will we be able to correct Blossom Heath and Veterans Memorial?
That's the goal, is to fix all of this.
All of the other city buildings that are showing up at City Hall?
That is correct. That's the process.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for the response. Thank you for having had reviewed that phone call. Golly, come on in.
Tony, thank you.
Focus.
Appreciate you coming.
I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
2D, presentation from the library. We're on the front entrance renovation.
She brought a brick.
I brought a brick.
Fantastic.
Just in case you wanted to see the color that I sent.
Is that scribed or is that?
There's all different fonts.
Well, that looks better than the graphic.
Well, the graphic I just had to try to pull together. Photoshop and things, I'm all set. So, good evening, mayor and council. I'm here for the St. Clair Shores Public Library Front Entrance Enhancement. If you want to go to the next slide, you can see what the current front entrance looks like. So right now...
Stephanie, you are Stephanie Fair, the library director, correct?
I am Stephanie Fair, the library director. Thank you.
All right.
So as you can see, this is a central access point to the library. It is not very welcoming, and it needs a little bit of help in the visual appeal, as well as safety and accessibility. So that's where this project comes in, and this initiative would reflect that as far as our continuous improvement with the library, especially since we're going into renovations as well for the inside. If you want to go to the next slide. So we have some goals here for the project. Greek/Roman style, I don't know exactly the style columns, but I was told that they might be Roman, so the Greek or Roman style columns, we are looking to remove and adhere the lettering that are, is on that to the wall itself, to the building directly. We are looking to remove those pavers that you saw in the current photos and have those improved with engraved lettering bricks. And to be able to do that, we are looking to have a fundraiser like the golf course did. So with that, if you wanted to go to the next slide, the fundraiser overview, we're using the same company that the golf course did, which is Brick Markers, and the pricing stays the same. We want to make it cohesive with them and not change anything really up. And there would be an example of some of the gravings that people could put on there as well. And the nice thing about working with Brick Marker is that they completed the whole website, and then we just put into the... And there would be an example of some of the gravings that people could put on there as well. And the nice thing about working with Brick Marker is that they completed the whole website and then we just put into the city's IT and working with finance to have the PayPal so it could be purchased online, but Brick Markers also does in paper form, so if anyone wanted to do it that way and pay by check or cash, they would have that ability to do so. And then the nice thing is, is I can go in and review all of the brick markers that are purchased, make sure that they are appropriate and there's nothing inappropriate that would be at the front entrance of the library. So, with the next slide. So, with saying that, it really gives the option for the community to make an impact and a legacy there for the library, so whether you're celebrating a milestone or wanting to honor a loved one, which we have a lot of people do by book, so this would be another kind of permanent way to do outside. And then since it is a high-traffic area for the city, it does give the option for the businesses to promote their business there as well and show some community support. And then, so that's some Photoshop skills between Aaron in Communications and myself, so it doesn't look exactly like that. Obviously, the color looks better in person, but just to give you kind of an idea, it gives it a nice cleaned enhanced look and then it helps with having the bed done by communications or beautification committee commissioned next to us. So, then we kind of have an enhanced look for both of that and make sure that that garden is still there in dedication of Joe Cottrell, I believe. Did I say that?
Crutal.
And then that is our proposed look for the flyers, so we've been having some fun. I was talking to staff at the last staff meeting we had that this would be an opportunity that I'm talking to council with and so we came up with little brick paver bookmarks that we'll hand out to everyone while we're suggesting them. Some of the staff came up with slogans that they plan on talking to patrons that come in with, and then we have flyers and then we'll obviously use like our social media and obviously today, city council, if anyone's watching, would have an idea that this program is coming up. So, with approval of council, we would start this as early as tomorrow. I mean, technically, if you wanted to buy a brick, you could go on there tonight and purchase one, but we would start this tomorrow and hopefully get some purchases, whether they be by residents or businesses.
Exciting.
Very exciting. I'm excited. The staff is actually really excited too, so that's nice to have their excitement for the project as well.
It turned out wonderful, the golf course, and I'm sure it's gonna turn, turn out here wonderful here at the library. It's, it's a nice program. Mr. Vitale?
Yeah, oh, well, first of all, I would say that maybe it was the difference in printer versus seeing it as a powerpoint, because there's a lot redder on our printer. But I did have a question and that is, is this going to be an ongoing fundraiser? Like, because there may be people a year from now that want to do a brick and I'm sure the library could always use the funds.
Sure. So, with talking with Brick Marker, we can set it up that we have designated time that we would like to have installation and I would like to do that when renovations are completed inside so that we don't have any construction issues and we have anyone pulling up and breaking any bricks, they take care of the old pavers. But what they did say is that you can pop out ones that are not marked and put those in if we wanted to. So, it could happen down the road. I would prefer to try to get it all installed at one time.
No, I, I mean, obviously that would be the preference, but I guess we'll just really have to do a good job of publicizing this to try to get it all done as soon as possible. Because I definitely have one in mind for you, the highest dollar one, and I talked about it at my house and it's gonna, it's gonna push the limits a little bit. You're gonna be reviewing it, but if you're familiar with the movie Idiocracy, you'll get it.
All right, well, at least I'll know to watch for it.
But no, I think it's a great, great program.
Yeah, thank you. I've been pushing it a little bit, just telling like library friends, like this is coming up at city council, I'm really excited, so I've had some people that own businesses in and out of the city that are interested in purchasing bricks, so I'm gonna force a lot of library people to probably put their names out front, but it works.
Hopefully, movie quotes will work.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, first off, thank you for your oversight. There's a couple at the golf course are a little iffy, so.
Colorful, colorful.
Colorful puns and such, but I'll leave it at that, so I think.
I won't share all the slogans that some of the staff came up with, they're inappropriate as well.
But, so about the Photoshop one too, something that will look different, look more akin to the one at the golf course versus this one is the one being shown in the Photoshop version, they're all the uniform-sized bricks, but like at the golf course, you're offering a four-by-eight and an eight-by-eight, so there will be two different sizes interspersed into the rectangle.
Correct. So, the two different sizes, four different options, just basing how you want it laid out onto the brick itself.
And some, you can pay a little bit more and have an emblem or an icon or an image or something. There's a whole lot of selections. I know at the golf course, they had probably hundreds you can choose from. It's the same company, so I'd imagine.
Companies, same logos will be available, so it's a long list. I had to scroll a couple times down onto the website to go through all of them.
I, I have one at the golf course that has a sailboat on it, it says Rusi Tubelman family, it's my fiancee, so I have his name on there, Rusi Tubelman family. And then I was looking through the icons again, I saw a pumpkin, it's like, oh my God, I needed that one, like a jack-o'-lantern. So, I have Candace Cassandra and Logan, that's my sister, my nephew with the little pumpkin that's coming, so.
Well, now your opportunity is here.
Well, I have that one too at the golf course. I'll have that one here too, so, because my nephew loves Halloween, just like we do. So, anyway, a couple of questions though. I know we're getting rid of the, I think the Roman columns, I want to say of the subgenre Tuscan, I think with the lack of fluting, but either way, they're awful, so I'm very glad we won't have those anymore. The benches are very rusty, some of the coatings shipped up. Are we talking about fixing those or getting new benches there too as part of this overhaul?
So, those are some things that I've been thinking about, not only the benches, but even the garbage cans need replacement. So, I've had that in the back of my mind. It wasn't something that I put on the presentation, but those would be things that I would be looking at as well.
That might be something. I know there's decayed benches through the Parks and Rec program where people donate even more to put a plaque on a bench and that could be another arm of this too, just so we could get those benches replaced and upgraded as part of this too. So, you might want to think about talking with Rob and Tommy and offering maybe a memorial type thing for, I don't know how much money, I thought they were like 1,200 maybe.
Yeah, it might be a tad, a tad higher.
A tad higher nowadays, but yeah, 15, yeah. So, something like that for people who really want to help support and help have a lasting, you know, memorial type thing, that might be something to look into too, so we could get those benches replaced.
That's a great idea, thank you.
Could you send us the flyer? That's very wordy and believe it or not, I can make things less wordy. I know sometimes it's hard to tell up here, but I can. So, I would kind of like to have a crack at this, maybe given it's a flyer, that's a lot to ask. I know you guys are a library, but that's a lot to ask someone to read.
I copied the golf course flyer.
On a flyer, yeah, I thought the same thing about that one.
Okay, no worries.
Now, if we have a chance to maybe make it a little bit more concise, I, if you could send that to us, we could give a little input on, I think that would be useful. And given that this is the season of farmers markets and social districts and the like, an outreach at the library might want to consider doing is maybe having a presence in some of those events for a little bit and maybe having some of the information in the sample brick and just to reach people too about this and some flyers to pass out.
That's a great idea. We are scheduled to go to the Thursday farmer market, so we will have that happen.
Okay, great. And thanks for your work on this. Not only is the current entrance way very unattractive, I know we have, I've made some of these complaints, I know we've received some of these complaints, especially now with the feedback box, the comment box in the library of people saying just how this needs to be done. So, I'm glad we have this in place and looking forward to gain those. I hate brick pavers like this and they look awful and they're a trip hazard potentially, so I'm glad we are addressing this. And a way that people can contribute too, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. I was gonna, I was gonna ask about the benches, how much would the benches be, but Candace kind of usurped me on that, but I'm excited for, you know, the fact that we're doing this here and with so many people that visit the library. I think the last numbers were like 15,000 or even higher, depending on which, which thing you're looking at. We should sell that out, so I think what we should do is start taking a peek around the building and see what phase two, where phase two could go, because I think we're gonna sell out. And you're right, I, you know, I may not have a good movie quote, but I've got, I got a couple of other good quotes that we could put in.
I might have more than one.
Well, you scare me, that's why. So, no, I'm, I'm excited for this, I'm glad that you guys were working with Parks and Rec to get this, pull this all together. And, and I know the library board's on, on board with that as well, so.
They are, yes.
That's all I have, Mayor, thanks.
Mr. Rubello?
Stephanie, I don't know, I don't know if it's on here because the lettering is really small, at least for me. What's the goal number to hit here?
Well, the goal would be to take care of the whole cost of the front entrance enhancement. It would depend on what bricks are purchased and what size. When I last looked to just have cement put down, I was working with Dustin, we came up with a number from a couple different places, around 15,000, a little bit less or so. So, we're, we're gauging the paver's, you know, installment to be around that price.
Okay. I think Mr. Vitale was sort of getting at, he may want to put a statue of himself up there reading a book or something.
That would be 20,000.
Yes.
No, just movie quotes.
Okay. And I have some other types of ideas for libraries that have had fundraisers, so I will forward them to you in case it's something.
Stephanie, thanks for the update and we look forward to a great success over here, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And it did get passed over one. Joe, Project Brotherhood, come on up here, we won't, I know you got an announcement, we won't make you wait till the end here. Dustin, did you pay the, the electric bill or the gas bill, because we don't have any air?
Gotcha.
Okay. Joe, don't take all day, but thank, thanks for coming and thanks for what you do.
I'll try not to, Mayor. Thank you for the invite and council members as well. Do you need the spelling of my name? Joseph, J-O-S-E-P-H, last name is G-E-M-A-Y-E-L. So, thank you for the opportunity. I just want to take a second first to apologize that I didn't come here earlier. Usually, we're, we're ahead of time. There's been a bunch of stuff going on in life that I had to pay attention to, so, but we are having our Veterans Gallery Show again, it's gonna be this weekend at Trader Todd's Marina, 6, 7, 8 of June. I got some flyers here, I'll give them to the clerk, pass them out. So, on the Friday is the opener. For those of you guys that have attended before, thank you. For those of you guys that haven't, you're more than welcome to, come on over. We have a whole bunch of fun events. This is also open to the public, just because it's a veterans event, doesn't exclude the public from coming. We invite veteran artists, they do different types of art to display their art and throughout the weekend, we have different things going on as well. So, again, Friday is our opener, we're gonna open up at 6. It's open to the public, you're more than welcome to come see, the art is for sale. We have anything from photography to traditional painting, we have a little bit of woodworking and this year, we are being joined by a, an army veteran who is doing metal forging, so he's gonna do like bracelets and stuff like that. So, if you want something like, something like that done, come on down. He'll be doing that Saturday, displaying all weekend. Saturday morning, between the hours of 11 and roughly about 4 o'clock, we may have, and I say may because the artist that does the sip and paints had a loss in the family recently, so I have to make sure she's doing it. However, if not, at 5:00 PM, we're opening up for a comedy show. It's 30 bucks, includes a taco bar, cash bar's gonna always be open. Most of our comedians this year are veterans, we have a few that are not, but they're all funny, so come on out, check it out. Sunday morning from 11 o'clock until the food is done, we're gonna have a brunch and then Sunday at 1 o'clock to 5:00 PM, the Orbit Suns Band is going to be playing. It's free to get in, there's no cover charge. The only thing we're charging for is a comedy show, it's 30 bucks and all the proceeds that we raise go to help struggling veterans. We do find, for those of you guys that don't know, we do financial assistance for struggling veterans, we pay mortgage payments, car payments, catch up on rent. We've been working closely with the Saginaw VA on keeping veterans in hotels while their HUD vouchers come through and they get their apartments, so that's where we come in and plug in the gap. We work with the VFWs, the American Legions, the VA and everybody else. What makes our, our organization unique is we don't have a lot of red tapes that some of the federal organizations or local organizations may have because of bylaws and everything else. So, that's where we're at this weekend. Come on out, check us out at Trader Todd's Marina and we'd love to see all your faces, so. Any questions? Did I talk fast enough?
That was good, great. Appreciate it again. Again, it's this weekend, tell us again the date and times.
So, it starts on Friday at 6, doors open at 5. Saturday, the 7th, doors open at 11 and Sunday, the 8th, doors open at 11. Friday, we go to 10 o'clock at night, Saturday, we go to 10 o'clock at night and Sunday, we go until Todd and Virginia kick us out.
And location again?
Trader Todd's Marina down on Jefferson Road.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. My error here, I'm moving, getting Joe up here, 2D, we do, we need to recommend a motion to approve Stephanie and the brick paver fundraiser to enhance the front entrance of the library.
So, move, support.
Okay, there was a lot down there, so I'll, so Mr. Karen and supported by Ms. Rusi, all in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? Thank you. And then just a comment I have before we go to audience participation and it is regarding the St. Clair Shores Memorial Day Parade. Couple items. First, to thank the committee for all their effort and to put on the 76th Annual Memorial Day Parade. It was a big event, turned out pretty well, as you know, though. We did have a distressing issue, I wanted to acknowledge that. We had an incident, a young boy was, along with his uncle, was injured by a golf cart. The city is still engaged in, in a full-scale investigation regarding it. I know on behalf of all of us who are sitting here, wish the young child a speedy recovery, back to full health. We are distressed that obviously it occurred at, at the parade and someone, A, would be hurt, let alone a, a young boy hurt. So, again, we're hoping for and know he'll have full recovery and full health, so again, we wish it would have never happened and as we go in the future in Memorial Day Parades, you know, we will for sure review everything that we have and what goes on there, obviously, since this incident occurred, but again, on behalf of everybody here, we wish that child a full recovery and back to a full, full health. And then finally, next year's parade, which will be 2026, Mr. Rubello, it will be, it will be a pretty big parade for us, it'll be the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. It's the 75th anniversary here of the City of St. Clair Shores incorporated in 1951, so we, I know you usually work hard all year, you'll have to work maybe a little doubly hard, we'll let a couple of floats if you don't mind, Mr. Rubello.
I've already gone through this in my mind and I want to get these invitations out before someone grabs them because it's gonna be competitive next year.
So, again, I wanted just to acknowledge that and again, we're, you know, praying for the full recovery of, of that young boy. With that, we will move to audience part participation. Abby, do we have anyone here regarding agenda items?
Yes, we have two. The first speaker is Austin Fletcher, speaking on item number six, and he is a St. Clair Shores resident.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. As mentioned, my name's Austin Fletcher, I live at 22618 Hanson Court. I'm here to speak on the amended site plan approval for 226019 Mile, the old nursing home. I'm opposed to this amendment, it's more intense than the previous one. It goes from one building, one dumpster pad and one drive-through to two buildings, two drive-throughs and three dumpster pads, much more intense development, makes my concerns with noise and light pollution even more so, especially budding to 15 residents. I did, want to say I did have a meeting this afternoon with Councilman Vitelli, the planner, and some members from the development side and my biggest concern now is the screening. I have a lot of natural existing landscape along my back property wall and with the new wall coming in, I'm worried that my vegetation will be adversely affected. Also, the unique topography that we have with that site, as the site slants down towards the properties, residential properties, it creates a hire point, you can actually see into people's backyards, which makes my concern with the barrier even more. I know there's a regulation that you have to have a six-foot wall, which they are proposing, but I'd like to see the arborvities that they're proposing not be five or, four or five footers, be six footers instead. It sounds like at the meeting we had today, that the developer is amenable to these couple things, increasing the size of their arborvities and going to creative ways to protect my landscaping, but I'd like to hopefully get. But I'd like to hopefully get some further commitment from the city and where the developer tonight when you guys talk about this development. I'd also like to see top of wall and bottom of wall elevations on the plans. Currently, there are nothing there to be able to tell if they voted to the rights, I like they're not. I'm also concerned with the operating hours with business districts being there. I know the planning commission had talked about having less business all the way to like, not midnight, but maybe till eight or nine. And I think, if I could finish real quick.
Yes, sir.
I think there's a better opportunity on the far east of the property for green space by taking one of the islands that they have, buffer, pump outs, eliminating that, moving it over, maybe getting rid of one or two spaces. You can have a nice kind of pocket park green on that east side. Put some picnic tables or some trees there. And then lastly, I'd like to thank the opportunity to talk about something on the agenda before it's actually voted on. I was not given that opportunity at planning commission meetings.
No problem.
And then one other quick last thing. I'd like to see the planning commission put this up electronically on the website. I had to actually go to City Hall and Business Hour and take pictures of plans. They weren't available like they are with the city council.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next is Mike Gutoe, speaking on agenda item 7A, and he is a St. Clair Shores resident.
Hi, everybody. I'll make this abbreviated version of what I was going to say, given only two minutes. 10 years ago, a decade ago, I came in front of a council and mayor and did the unthinkable and got people to stand behind a cause, not knowing what this cause is going to be about, how it was going to be run or anything else like that, but it was on faith. And because of that 10 years ago, the City of St. Clair Shores council and mayor started a movement that made it legitimate. Because their efforts, Harrison Township got behind it, Gross Point got behind it, politicians got behind it, residents got behind it. Thousands of people got behind this cause. And it was Save Lake Sinclair. And I want to thank you guys for that. I am here a decade later to say what St. Clair Shores has done and been the leader is by far incredible. In the 10 years' time, they have received over $150 million of funding. They are separating their sewage as much as they can beyond any county around the area. And there will be basically 80 to 70, 80% reduced sewage overflows within the next year or two, which is incredible. I'm here asking again, a decade later, the same council to stand behind something that I saw that I didn't really realize what it was about until now. Hopefully, it will be about is the Lake Sinclair Clean Water Initiative Act. And I don't know what is on the agenda for that or how much money is being towards that. But we have something that we need to do is start removing the muck from our shoreline that is affecting the entire shoreline of St. Clair Shores. And within that St. Clair Shores Clean Water Initiative, I would like to see funding. I want St. Clair Shores to be the leader of this. Start the movement again. Get every other county and around here to help pitch in and start cleaning up our lake. You guys were the leaders. You are the leaders. You've been the leaders. Continue to be the leadership and show people around here what's going on and how you guys are being leaderships that changes everything. It's because of you guys, we literally have received over $300 million from the state of Michigan to start this effort. $300 million. It's incredible. And it's all because of the people who stood here before 10 years ago to help me start that movement. So on this Clean Water Lake Initiative is a tax, I believe is what it is, right?
Yep.
What's the money going towards? How's it going to be used? How's it going to be funded? If you need a 501(c)(3), let me know. Save Lake Sinclair is a 501(c)(3). What I think we could do is with the DEQ, they understand the problem that is there right now. And I believe that they will issue permits to have this stretch. We just need to figure out funding and what to do it. And I think right now we have an opportunity that's in front of us with this Clean Water Initiative that's going to be proposed. I would like to know what the funding is going to be going towards, how much is going to be there, and how can we use it to help start cleaning up the lake? Because it's, as you guys know, it's a bad problem, but 10 years later, we're making progress. I'm going to continue that progress, so. Thank you.
Mike, thank you. Just two, correct, Abby? So item four is the Planning Commission Request for Zoning Ordinance Amendment to Section 48-550 Accessory Structures. Liz Cottle, City Planner.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, you have a series of ordinance amendments being proposed. These were put before the Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago. These were also advertised in the newspaper. I'll just quickly go through them for the first agenda item, which is accessory structures. If you'll see, there's numbered 1 through 10. Those are not being affected. Number 11, we would be striking out variances or appeals shall be heard by the zoning board of appeals. We don't need to say that. All the appeals are heard by the zoning board of appeals within this ordinance. Then on the next page, we are adding exterior finish permit and foundation requirements. We didn't have exterior finish requirements before, so we are adding that. Siding comprised of vinyl, T111, painted wood, engineered wood, cement board or other weatherproof material as submitted and approved by our department. Bricker stone, but not concrete block. Galvanized painted or vinyl coated metal. And then prefabricated polyvinyl chloride or PVC kits as submitted and approved by our department. And then resin as well. The other thing that we're doing is we're clarifying the language that had been approved by this body a few years ago. If you recall, you had approved language to not require a permit for resin sheds up to 24 square feet. And then they only needed to be on a four-inch slab with six inches around from 25 to 144 square feet and then back to a footing above that. We actually received some pushback from a resident. And the ordinance could have been interpreted that no permit was required for anything except for resin sheds over 24 square feet. So we just put some clarification in there for this. In addition to that, the change that we also made is in line with the building code. Accessory structures larger than 600 square feet would require full 42-inch footings per building code. It's actually more difficult to try to enforce two different ordinances when in this case the building code would trump this. That is the gist of everything for the accessory structure ordinance. I am happy to take any questions, comments or otherwise.
Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. Question on some of the language. I think we might need to add just exemption in 12B1. If you look at 12A51, it says resin accessory structures up to 24 feet in an area are allowed without a permit. So they don't need a permit, right? If they're less than 24 feet in resin. But then if you look at 12B1, accessory structures less than 100 square feet require a building permit, which that would encompass the ones, resin, less than 24 square feet. So I think we need to build an exception and just add some language in 12B1, specifically exempting the 12A51 resin accessory structures up to 24 feet because right now there's a contradiction in there.
Yes, no problem. Thank you.
Yeah, because right now 51 says no permit, but the B1 would say you need a permit. So we need to exempt out the 51 resin.
Got it. No problem.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Frederick.
Yeah, regarding that same one, I had the same question regarding the up to 24 square feet. And I thought we also talked about that we were going to allow people to put that on like patio blocks or brick pavers or things like that.
The, it ended up being approved with the language that's in here right now. So it has to have a weatherproof floor and placed on monolithic concrete or asphalt that's approximately four inches thick.
So we would have, they would have to actually come out and pour concrete to do this?
Or asphalt, yeah.
And why did we, why did we get that changed?
Well, I believe that it was the, you're testing my memory here. I believe it was the planning commission that made the suggestion and that in the end it was not. And I don't remember if it was approved by the planning commission, but not by you guys or not approved by the planning commission or you guys. I don't really recall. But I think the idea was that pavers still allow for essentially potential infiltration of rodents.
I guess what we were trying to do is to, for residents who go buy a resin shed at Home Depot or Lowe's or whatever, to not have to then hire a cement truck to come out and pour a pad where they could actually pick up the four patio blocks that they would need for underneath that. And I don't know, I just, I just think we should make it easier for people to do that. And I don't know, are we having problems with that now? Do we, are we getting calls for rodents under patio stones or?
No, I don't believe so. I mean, it's a pretty narrow, specific thing, but I don't believe that we've received any, any more than usual, right?
Well, for, I guess for this size, I think, I think we should change that back to allowing brick pavers or patio stones or something in a, you know, in a confined area, right? So that it's, it allows for that. Because I, you know, what we're trying to do is allow people to use these things, but now it becomes almost cost prohibitive for them to, you know, to have to, still have to, you know, come on and put another piece of cement, usually in their backyard. Some people even can't get to their backyard, right? With, anyway, okay, that's my point. Mr. Vitale.
Yeah, I remember that very well, actually, because I was the one who proposed this, which what was actually a relaxation of the ordinance. Because at that time, we required a rat wolf basically for anything. So this was the idea that PVC is not food, wood is food, it's not subject to rot. And the relaxation, when that was proposed, one specific person on planning said, well, why don't we let people do them on patio blocks? And it was actually no further than that. That was like one of the comments that was made. And at that meeting, I attacked that like crazy and said, first of all, the quality of how someone lays out patio blocks is quite subjective as compared to a monolithic concrete pore. The other part of this idea was that this would allow people to place the shed on top of, let's say they've got a two and a half car garage or something, or a one and a half car garage. And they have a little area that doesn't have a door in front of it. You can put their patio shed on the driveway. Or at the back of the house where there's maybe a patio or something that exists. That would then make that legitimate. But to say that you can put one of these sheds up on top of patio blocks is to create an environment where you've kind of built and now a natural shelter for rodents. So that was the idea. Those patio blocks, they move, you know, it's, they open up gaps. It's subjective, the quality they're laid out with. So we didn't want to get into that. This change that's proposed is because we had a situation, like Liz said, where someone was wordsmithing the ordinance and saying, well, if I, what if I build it exactly 144 square feet, then I don't need a permit? It was something along those lines that, I said, really? Better get somebody out there and measure that and make sure he's exactly 144 square feet. So this was just to clean up that. And I think also clean up of the 400 versus 600.
Correct.
Which I was not aware of.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think that's all this is about, not trying to introduce.
No, no.
Any other, because then that would need to really be further debated and studied. And one reason we don't have complaints about it is because we don't allow it. So.
Motion be in order?
I would make a motion to approve the changes to our ordinance, planning, I'm looking for the actual title of the ordinance here.
40.
Section 48-550 accessory building structure.
A few of the changes, Ms. Rusi.
With the changes also to.
I'll support that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. So, Ms. Rusi, thank you. Liz?
Thank you. The next zoning ordinance amendment, zoning ordinance amendment you have before you is for the B1 zone. This one, the sort of primary intent here, and many thanks to Councilman Karen for assisting in drafting this ordinance language. But the primary intent is to allow commercial vehicle parking in commercial areas. This is kind of going to be married with the idea of the study session that was had about commercial vehicles within residential areas, right? So if we're going to be restricting what commercial vehicles would be, be able to be in residential areas, we need to provide some relief for business owners. And then there's some other language cleanup that is occurring as well. And then in addition to that, allowing outdoor seating by right in the B1 zone. It actually currently doesn't allow for that. So the first change would be eliminating the city council's ability to modify the hours of operation. Again, this goes back to only the zoning board of appeals can make any sort of variances to the zoning ordinance. The second change is allowing outdoor seating with, within the B1 district for restaurants. Then the next one was, this one has been a sort of a long time coming. As you probably all recall, we put an exception into the ordinance for propane tank storage outside. And my understanding was there was hope that ice machines would also be allowed. So I did insert in here one commercial-grade outdoor ice merchandiser machine, which is the fancy schmancy way of saying ice machine. Then the last part is the outdoor parking of commercial vehicles with a series of conditions. So the series of conditions is that vehicles would not exceed a length of 20 feet and a height of 10 feet. They would be accessory to the primary use on the property. The rental display or permanent storage of vehicles or trailers would be prohibited. The storage of materials, tools, debris or other matter within the open bed of a truck is prohibited. Commercial vehicles shall not be stored permanently on-site. Vehicles parked overnight shall be driven off-site for the operation of the primary business. During normal business hours, the business shall maintain the minimum number of required parking spaces available to patrons. And the property shall comply or obtain a variance for the wall that would be between the commercial business and then adjacent residence. Then the only other proposed change, which is related to this, is within the special land uses, under auto repair, removing the language or vehicles other than those being serviced or repaired. Because this could allow for an auto repair center to have a commercial vehicle there. Not a tow truck necessary, but a store, a service van could be then parked at the auto repair center. So again, I'm available for questions, comments and otherwise.
Mr. Rabello.
The first one I wanted to ask you about, can you go a little bit further on the machines with the businesses? Pot machines?
Just an ice machine, one ice machine.
One ice machine. So if I wanted to, I'm just picking, I'll pick Wong's Restaurant. I don't know where I came up with that. Can they put a ice machine in front of their place?
Let's see here, all business.
This could go for anybody. I'm not just picking on Wong's.
Right, right. So, so all business servicing, processing or storage shall be conducted within the enclosed building except for, and in this case it is, ice machine and then storage tank and then commercial vehicle. So those would be the three things now that would be allowed to be outside. So yes, Wong's could have an ice machine out there.
Not a pot machine, none of that type of stuff.
Mm-mm.
Okay, that clears up the first thing. The second thing I would like to ask you about is what classifies a commercial vehicle?
These provisions classify a commercial vehicle for this part of the ordinance. Does that, so we have a commercial vehicle ordinance as well. And that, that describes and lays out enforcement for vehicles separate from this. So for the operation of a business legally within the city, you would have to meet all of these requirements.
Okay, so basically we're sort of cleaning up some language in here.
We're actually giving, giving some additional permissions.
Okay. Recommended by the planning commission?
Recommended by the planning. Recommended by the planning commission.
Okay, because this, this here, as a salesperson for the St. Clair Shore Sentinel for forty something, forty years about, I have heard this come up. I can't even tell you how many times that people have chosen another city because they have nowhere to bring their vehicles. It's just, it's that simple. So I love this because I've heard it for decades, okay? And I really believe that this is a very good thing for the business community. As long as the, what they bring home isn't, you know, obnoxious types of vehicles and trucks that are going to affect the neighbors. So in your opinion, do you think that that would happen with this?
So what this does is this potentially takes those commercial vehicles out of the neighborhood and parks them in neighbor, in the business that is associated with them.
Okay, because this, this is a very, this is a very strong pro-business to me. A pro-business that they can bring their, they can bring their vehicles home.
No, this one allows them to park their commercial vehicles. So let's say for instance.
Or just park, okay.
Yeah, I'm going to make up.
This has nothing to do with putting them in the house?
Correct. It has everything to do with letting them park it at their business.
Yeah, to allow them to do that, that is a very, very strong, good thing for the business community. And I'm so glad that we are, we are discussing this. Because I know it works both ways and stuff. Some people complain that there's, you know, vehicles in the driveway of the neighbor next door and so forth. This is going to give these business owners some breathing room, okay? And a place to put their stuff. And I think that, I think that that is a very, very good thing. So I have no problem, a total yes vote on this. And I would make a motion to approve the, this, to approve the zoning ordinance amendments of section forty-eight dash three zero four, B1 local business district.
I'll support it.
Moved by Mr. Rabello, supported by Mr. Karen. Other questions? Thank you. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, just to, to one of the points brought up about the effect on neighboring residents. One of the requirements is that they have to be in compliance with the wall ordinance in order to park their vehicles overnight on their property. So that creates that buffer with the residents. And this is one of the key things, as we're seeing more businesses within our city transition to the service orientation, right? Couple, you know, we've got residential electric moving to Harper, right? And they have like, I don't know, like five or six vans. So what this allows is that those vans stay at the property overnight. Their electricians come in in the morning, drop off their vehicle, they pick in the van, they go do their job. And Zeppelin Cleaning is another one that has several trucks and vehicles parked overnight. It's for their employees to come in, pick up their vehicle, go do their job, come back, get their vehicle, go home. So that's what this really allows. One little nuance on Zeppelin, as I'm thinking if there's, I wanted to tweak something in here, but I'm not going to propose that. But we've got like a newer issue to where
Yeah.
They are using an adjoining lot, probably has, they probably have a permission. But the way they're parking them is like, no, you're using it as signage, not as storage.
Yep, I know exactly what you're talking about.
And that, so that's something we need to work with them on getting them in compliance with what they're doing there.
But I do think this addresses that situation because it does say that
Well, that's the thing.
Operation of the primary business, right?
Right, but they, but they're like one block over, could be renting it, right? You know, in order to have the space, some of them are at kind of the end of the 20-foot limit in terms of the size of the truck. But just purposely, the way they're parking them, it is to have billboards on Harper, not to just store them. So we'll need to work with them on that. But, but yeah, thank you for putting this together. And I think this will be a big help for a lot of those businesses. They're looking for that flexibility of how they use their property in here. And it does protect the residents by making sure it stays on their property, not bleeding off into the neighborhoods. So thank you.
Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. Just a couple of cleanup points. This is not part of what's being changed, but why we're changing this ordinance. We probably should change this and clean this typographical issue up for two B. Currently it says sale and storage or propane tanks. I assume you mean of propane tanks. So let's get that cleaned up. And then in the new, when the new sections to C, it says overnight parking of commercial vehicles subject to the following conditions for consistency's sake and also grammatically correctness sake. If you look at like the ordinance above forty-eight, three oh five, eleven, it's the same type of format, but there's a comma in between small animals that's subject. And then it ends because it's proceeding an enumerated list with a colon. So we probably want to go overnight parking of commercial vehicles, comma, subject to the following conditions, colon. And that adds some consistency with some of the other ordinances around this one.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. Okay, so I'm going to ask you some questions about the overnight parking of commercial vehicles subject to the following conditions, colon. All right. First off, 20 feet by 10 feet, is that the size of a parking spot? Is that why we picked 20 by 10? Because there's some vehicles that are bigger than 20.
Right, and a parking space is nine feet wide by 20 feet long. So it wouldn't be any larger than the length of a parking space.
What happens sometimes behind the buildings, where you have the wall, you have the building, another building next to you juts out. Sometimes there's, you know, 25 feet between the end of the neighboring building and the building where they may be parking. So I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is if it, if it's not obstructing the next building, if somebody wants to park their 22 and a half foot truck or whatever in their 20 by 10 parking space, I mean, I'm hoping we're not going to start dinging people on that. That just would be upsetting.
I would say that if it, are we going to go out and measure every vehicle realistically? No. But I think the idea is to have this here in the event that we do get some, some sort of business that consistently has 23, 24, 25-foot long vehicles, right? And would be an issue.
All right, so that brings up my next question. And that is, is there a way to adjudicate exceptions like we have for fence arbitration, sign arbitration? Do we have an arbitration board or something that we could establish within this ordinance? So that if there is a, you know, a unique situation?
ZBA.
ZBA? They have to go to ZBA?
It has to be, state law requires ZBA.
Okay.
So I will say this, if you wanted that, you would need to take this whole section out and put it somewhere else.
Got it.
And we had talked about that, but we thought that in the end, having all of those requirements for what the B1 district would allow in one place really makes it easier for us to enforce and to demonstrate.
Totally agree with that, totally agree with that. I had to ask that question just to make sure that it's on the record that there is a way to adjudicate it.
Yes.
And that is the zoning board.
Correct.
Okay. Next up, number three, rental display or permanent storage of vehicles and trailers is prohibited. Permanent storage of vehicles and trailers.
Correct.
So permanent storage of trailers is prohibited.
Correct.
Okay, so define permanent. Define permanent.
The idea, right, would be that it is not, they, they shall be driven off-site for the operation of the primary business. So that would be, right, that would be the idea. So it's not permanent if it is.
My issue with that is you may have a trailer. There may be an electrical company that has a trailer that they go take out on the bigger jobs once a month. So now is that permanent?
I would say if that's truly driven off-site for the operation of the primary business, and it is, and it is that, you know, and there's more to it than that, right? If we're, if it is in good repair and in good working order and it's in one space and it goes off sometimes and comes back, but it's not used every single day, absolutely. If the tires are flat and there's no hitch on it.
Totally get all that, totally get all that.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's, that's sort of where we're looking.
I guess, I guess what comes to mind is, and Denise, you'll remember this one probably, but, and I'm not going to mention the business, but they had a trailer parked behind their business. There was no markings on the trailer, but we told them you can't do that.
And if it is the same business that I'm thinking of, they were using it for storage and they were not, it was not leaving the premises?
Well, it was leaving the premises during the winter. So now, you know, I mean, and these, these are, this is why adjudication may be necessary.
Adjudication may be necessary.
All right, so I guess I'm just concerned that, you know, I love the fact that we're going to clean it up. The wall thing, I think is a great idea. Let's make sure that it's the right size and all that. But I worry that we're going to, you know, we're going to ding some people. You know, they're going to be here, they're going to be in your office, and it's probably something that we don't need to do. So I guess I, what I would, I would like to see is that you can, if they can be explained, if they come in, that they can get it adjudicated at zoning. That would be great. The last thing I have is, storage of materials, tools, debris, or other matter within the open bed of a truck is prohibited. I mean, what, how do we do that? Is this a permanent truck? Is this something that is driving off during the day?
Yes, so for instance, it would be, the idea of it, it's, it would be like a pickup truck.
Yeah.
That has a bunch of empty trash cans, some shovels, and a few weed whips. We would not allow that in an open bed of a truck. You would need to have a truck cap.
So as long as it's covered?
Properly covered, we're not going to, we're not going to let you do a tarp, right? It needs to be like a permit, you know, again, permanent versus temporary idea.
Okay, so permanent, permanent, some kind of permanent cover that they could drive with, right? That's what you're saying? Okay, I can probably live with that. I just, I just worry that we're, we're getting a little too deep into somebody's business when you tell them they can't have stuff in the bed, the bed of their truck. When every, every, every truck owner in town has stuff in the bed of their truck.
Sure, but the idea is twofold. First of all, it opens it up to theft, right? Just having stuff in the open bed of the truck.
Sure.
Second of all, it does help with containment and just overall safety if it is in a cap or, you know, one of the tonneau covers or something like that.
So legally covered, being able to drive with the cover on would probably be a good way to do it. Okay. And the, I may have one more. Actually, I think we covered it about driving off during, okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Vitale.
Yes. Well, here's the scenario that I'm seeing. I think a lot of this probably pertains to the majority of the city from, you know, the border north all the way to, let's say, just before 13 Mile, where you have business basically at the zero lot line, parking is in the rear, okay? But now how does this work? Once I get north, and let's say that I'm in the landmark center, right? And I open up a used appliance store, and I use a humongous cargo van to deliver appliances with. And when it's not out delivering appliances, it's painted lime green and it says Hal's Discount Appliances right on the side of it. And I park it right facing Harper, and I'm basically advertising with it now. Now, I can say that I do use this in my business, right? I deliver a refrigerator, it's gone for an hour. But the whole rest of the time, it's basically advertising. And right now, that exact scenario occurs on Harper south of 16. Looks terrible. I don't want to see our strip centers turn into that. So is there anything in here that's talking about behind the lot line?
No, it does not go into detail about where on the property that it would be allowed to be parked. And I guess to your point, that is one of the ways it could be regulated. But we could not regulate what is on the vehicle, right?
I understand that. And see, that's the thing, is because we can't regulate that, you could have the most obnoxious display of advertising, which was nothing more than a billboard, okay? Or you could even keep one there more or less permanently. It wouldn't even have to be that roadworthy, right? As long as it's operational, I can start it, I can drive it forward 10 feet, I can back it up again. There's not much we can say. We're not going to get into like DOT tire age or anything like that. So I foresee a possibility that this gets abused. And I think this needs a little more work. The, in section forty-eight, three oh six, C, letter V, I think you're trying to address this with commercial vehicles shall not be stored permanently on site. And again, that gets into the idea of what's permanently. Because I can see scenarios on both sides where that becomes a problem, right? Kind of like Mr. Frederick brought up, or they go on vacation for two weeks and decide not to run their business. And now is that permanent? And then the other side of that, which is just some somewhat semi-roadworthy vehicle or completely roadworthy vehicle that's just being used as advertising. Vehicles parked overnight shall be driven off-site for operation of primary business. And how do you, you put a time on that? Because you've got to have something that's kind of concrete. You know, if you say it's got to move every 24 hours, that's a little unrealistic. They may not take it out, they go on vacation or something like that, so that's almost too short. But then if you say, oh, you can store it basically for the entire season, then I move it for what, a day, and I come back again and I get another season out of it? So how do we make sure that doesn't happen? Right now, our ordinance makes sure that doesn't happen. I agree that we should allow this in the rear of businesses. But I don't think we should allow this in the parking lots where they are in the front of the business and it makes sense to advertise. Because here's the thing, if I own a business that has the parking in the rear, I can come up with whatever kind of fancy truck I want, nobody's going to see it. It's not useful for advertising. But if I have a business where all my parking is up in front, well, then I've just basically blown away the sign ordinance, which we can't regulate because we can't regulate speech. So can we regulate the idea that this is only? The one thing I'll say is that when I think of those strip center type businesses, they're not the alarm installers or the electricians or those type of businesses that really need trucks. They tend to be more the pizza parlor.
Retail.
You know, kind of retail or something like that. So, you know, we could have somebody using a cargo van to deliver pizzas with and say, yes, this is what I use, look at my giant sign that advertises the $2.99 special or whatever. Is there a way to do this so that you have to have the vehicle at the rear of the property?
The short answer is yes. The longer answer is.
Maybe.
Maybe. Well, the longer answer is we, we would then have issues. And I don't normally like to name businesses, but this is one that's been in the city for a long time, Apollo. Apollo parks their vehicles on the north side of their building and have for, forever and ever and ever, right? They don't have enough parking in the back. And actually, I think that is even an SAD lot, which makes it even tougher.
Plus it's a fire.
A fire lane. So there are a lot of, of businesses out there that maybe they can't park in the back for a number of different reasons. And I wouldn't necessarily want to prevent a business from moving into the city because there isn't ample parking in the back for their vehicles.
Agreed. You know, that's where I feel like maybe this should be an arbitration, kind of like what Mr. Frederick suggested.
Can't do it.
Bob's got a comment.
Well, if it was in a different part of, then we could do it.
Yeah, true.
So.
This is a tricky issue, and other cities and townships have, have run into this as well. I think one thing, one thing that we could require is that, well, first of all, when you said humongous, this is still under the 20-foot regulation.
Ten feet of height.
I don't think that our ordinance requires that the truck be in a parking space. But I think it does need to be in an actual parking space. As opposed to pulling it up on one part of a driveway that's close to Harper that's not actually a parking place.
At Landmark Plaza, those are all legitimate parking spaces.
Well, I don't know if it's right up against the.
The very viewable ones would be.
Also, there are some cities that do have regulations rather than being a little bit more general like this is, that it has to be used in the normal course of, of the business and doesn't have any deadlines. Some cities and/or townships have requirements that it actually has to be used either on a daily basis or on a weekly basis. And they actually do get into. And they actually do get into code enforcement. Actually does chalk the tire to see if it has moved. And in order to get around that, some business, some businesses go out and they'll move their truck five feet and, uh, change the, the mark. But it's a difficult, uh, it's a difficult issue, but one way to resolve it, at least partially, is to understand that we do have a 20-foot limitation. Truck must be in a parking spot. And I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to say, if, if there is space in the back and keep, keep in mind, sometimes the lease, the, the landlord has requirements for these businesses as to what they could put in the back of the business and whether or not there's room. But if there is room in the back of the business and the lease allows it, then I think that anything, uh, you know, a, a truck in a situation like we're talking about, especially if it's over 20 feet, uh, should be in the back of the business.
Unfortunately, nothing Mr. Erie said gives me comfort. Because the parking spaces would be legitimate. And like I said, you could have somebody that says, oh, I deliver pizzas with this cargo van. This is, and I don't want to get into the idea of having code enforcement chalk tires, because I don't want to err on the other side of this either. Honestly, I think this needs a little more time to rework and a little more scenarios that, that we kind of.
What if we start with this?
Go forward in this? I don't want to start with this because then it's codified. What we really should do is table it, go back and work it out a little more and, and consider some of these scenarios. I don't want to, I don't want to err too, too much and start ticketing people that don't deserve it. And I don't want to become a, a fair haven just to become, you know, the Wild West with signage. So I, I think it just needs, I think we can make this work. I think we need to tweak it a little more. And get our heads together on this and. I, I didn't know, I guess, that this was going on, so I would have liked to put a little input into it with some of these scenarios. I know we have a motion that's active on the floor.
We have two pencils up, so let me, let me get on them, or you, you know of the table, we can't have a discussion.
Yeah, I understand that, and I don't think I can while we have an active motion, so.
Well, you can, you can.
Anytime.
You can if you choose to. Then come back to you. Mr. Rubello?
Well, some of the scenarios you're talking about right now actually do occur during business hours. They do pull their, they do pull their, our trucks or their advertisements, however, you know, you can describe it. That already goes on right now. So, um, I'm for the, if there's an issue for what Ron said, if we have to look at it a little bit further, but there's, in reality, there's not going to be a, a lot of things. Like Chris does bring up a point of people parking up on Harper. I, I get that, I, I, but I don't think that's a real norm. It, it may happen, uh, but I don't think it's a, a big problem because there's, we, in reality, we really don't have a lot of, uh, shopping plazas that, like, of that size. And these, and these vehicles are sort of, you know, capped a little bit on the size. So, um, I just, you know, I, we're going up the, the right alley here. And, uh, businesses do have a tough time right now. It's not the best of times for people. And if they get a little bit of, you know, an extra push, but I don't see this as a huge problem. Can it happen? Absolutely. People come up with all kinds of stuff that you never think coming. So, um, that's my input on it. I think this is maybe one of the most pro-business things any council, including this one, has ever done.
Mr. Lein?
I got it.
Mr. Karen?
One suggestion that might be able to help would be for the businesses that are parking there overnight, that they had to take the parking spots that are closest to the building. One, most of the buildings are cambered. Two, it keeps them, if they are in a shopping center, parking all the way out by Harper, being able to get the attention. If they are in a shopping center, they'll have to take the parking spots that are closest to the building. So if we just add that in, the overnight parking of commercial vehicles, if it's in the back, if they're gonna be parking at the closest, behind the back anyway. So it's just keeping their, their vehicles closest to the building during, uh, nighttime and, and storage, which gives them less visibility and less, uh, marketability.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, the biggest issue was trying to determine if we allow them to park on their property overnight and then tell them where they can park. I can't, I can't calculate the number of scenarios after you accounted for that. Whether it's businesses that had only parking put in the back, you know, businesses that are on the side, front lots, you know. I just don't know how you would codify that as well as then we're getting into of, oh, no, you could have parked one space closer. You know, I, I, I've struggled with trying to tell them where to park in their property. I just wanted them to be allowed to park in their property in a parking spot in that.
There was a car there when I left. I couldn't park there.
Well.
You know what I'm saying.
Yeah, and this is, we still basically run this all through complaint-driven. This isn't gonna be code enforcement going out, scoping businesses, looking for this. It's gonna be, you know, people in the neighborhood bringing these issues up, saying, hey, I'm regularly seeing this, you know, you know, this billboard sign sitting in this lot flashing all night, you know, because we know those, that, that's a possibility as well, right? Um, so, so I would say, because right now, it's not legal for them to do it at all. We've got plenty of businesses that are already doing it. So let's go ahead, approve it, see what other scenarios come up, make adjustments as we've always done. Um, and let's help the businesses that are there today, um, so that they're in compliance going forward.
Mr. Vitale?
Well, I would say, first of all, we have a number of council members who are famous for saying, why are we working, why are we retooling this at the council table? And we can't leave any open ends and possible scenarios and things like this, but suddenly, we're okay with that. I think it's very, I, I too support the idea in general of letting the businesses park the trucks there. However, I can see another, uh, set of circumstances where this could be abused, and no one denies that it could be abused. The thought is, well, we'll take care of it then. I don't really want to pass an ordinance like that. What I want to do is the thing that we would normally do, which is to say, there are a few unanswered questions here. We need to have some enforcement mechanisms, we need to solidify some of these things, not leave them vague. And you know what? We can probably do that in a council meeting a month from now. And we've managed to survive 70-some years with the ordinance the way it is. I don't think that tabling this and then bringing it back in a month is going to be that big of a deal. I'd rather have a better ordinance in a month than an ordinance where, to use the words of council people, well, we'll address that later. So I would then make a motion to table.
Before you do that?
And bring it back with, okay, you had something else?
Well, I, yeah, I had one other thing, if, if the mayor would so allow me. It's just a technical thing, so.
You didn't say the whole thing.
Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. So on 48, 307, under special land uses down at 3E. And I'm so surprised that Ms. Rusi did not catch this, but, um, 20-foot setbacks shall be required wherever building entrance is.
24 setbacks.
Twenty, it says 20-foot setbacks.
Okay.
Shall be required wherever building entrances or exits.
I see it. Yes, thank you.
For vehicles face street fundage.
Mr. Vitale?
That's all I had.
Okay, just, just to bring it back, you know, equally so that, so that your code enforcement people aren't on the spot here where, you know, they're told, get, get rid of this guy's got an all-night flashing sign up here or something like that. This is obviously for advertising. And then we have to say, you know, technically, it's not against our ordinance. Let's give this, I'd make a, a, a motion that we table this and bring it back within July.
Is, uh, Mr. Vitale makes a, a motion to, uh, table the zoning ordinance amendment of section 48, 304 B1 local business or district. Is there support to that table, that motion?
I'll support that.
Supported by Ms. Rusi. Roll call vote, Abby. A motion is made by Mr. Vitale, supported by Ms. Rusi, to table the zoning ordinance section 48 dash 304.
Councilmember Vitale?
Aye.
Councilmember Rusi?
Aye.
Councilmember Burgess?
Nay.
Councilmember Karen?
No.
Councilmember Frederick?
No.
Councilmember Rubello?
No.
Mayor Walby?
Aye, passes four to three. Uh, the ordinance is in, uh, no, the table does not go in effect, so we have a motion by Mr. Rubello, supported by Mr. Karen to approve, uh, the zoning ordinance 48 dash 304 B1 local business. Again, roll call vote, Abby?
With my changes?
Yes, with, with Ms. Rusi's changes.
And my changes, yes.
Who made the motion?
Uh, Mr. Rubello made the motion, Mr. Karen supported it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Rubello?
Aye.
This is voting for the, for the current amendment to pass, okay. Mr. Rubello votes aye.
Councilmember Karen?
Yes.
Councilmember Burgess?
Aye.
Councilmember Frederick?
Aye.
Councilmember Rusi?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale?
No.
Mayor Walby?
Aye, six to one, it passes. Thank you, Liz.
Liz ain't done going in here.
Oh, no, it's the list, I guess.
Item six is planning case to request amendment to the site plan approval for 22, 601, 9 mile road. Modify the existing approved multi-tenant commercial building, adding a free standing building with a pickup window. All rig, who's here? Come on up, Mr. Kirk.
Good evening, councilmembers.
Good evening.
Kirk Huth Lang Bedlamante, working with the All Rig team again on this project. You may recall, we were here a few months back getting site plan approval, special land use and rezoning. While we were completing that, All Rig attracted another national tenant, which required a approximate 2,400 square foot standalone building. So we're here to modify the site plan today. Uh, the good news is the footprint of buildings was reduced from about 9,000 feet to 7,300 feet. Better circulation, better layout on the project. Uh, we went, we meet all the ordinances, no variances required. We went to planning, we got an administrative recommendation for approval. Uh, at the planning commission meeting, discussions were had with regard to getting some additional green space, maybe losing some parking spaces. We actually did that and resubmitted. Mitch will show you, it'll be on the east end. And then before tonight's meeting, met with Mr. Fletcher and Councilman Vitale, talked about some others. There might be a way we pick up additional foot, um, green space in that area. So we're requesting the approval of this amended site plan. Mitch Harvey's here from Stonefield. He can go through the site plan with you and explain what you do.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Mitchell Harvey. I'm with Stonefield Engineering. Um, so as I'm sure everybody is aware, the site is, uh, we are looking at the complete redevelopment of the old senior living facility at 9 Mile and Glen, Glen Court. Not to dwell on the existing site too long, I just wanted to, to, to note a few things. The site does have a unique kind of triangle-shaped lot to, shape to it. Um, the existing building takes up a significant portion of the site, and the parking lot is paved all the way up to the screening wall to the north. So moving on to the site plan, um, it kind of highlighted some of the changes from the previous plan that was submitted. The largest change that we made is the western building was reduced from five tenants to four. Um, and we've added a separate building over here to the east. We feel this will overall break up the massing of the buildings and add some tech, some depth and texture to the site. The eastern building is going to be for a Chipotle restaurant. Um, one key thing I want to talk about is the pickup lane associated with this. So there is no menu board or order point in the, the, the pickup lane for Chipotle. It's all done online. You, uh, order on your phone, and then you're notified when your food is ready to be picked up. You enter the lane and you pick up your food. All payment occurs online, so it's a much, much faster, um, service time per customer. Really, uh, the average stacking is two customers in the Chipotle lane at a time. One other thing to notice, you'll notice we completely enclosed the driveway that was tying onto Glen Court, so we completely removed that and essentially shifted it over to the east side of the site. Beyond that, we, we've made some significant improvements to the landscaping buffer back here. Um, we're still maintaining that 20-foot buffer, but we have added over 60 evergreen trees along that strip and, um.
Will they be six feet tall?
I'm gonna get to that. So, um.
All righty.
We had a, uh, we had a meeting today, and we kind of discussed two changes that I wanted to, uh, just notify the, the, the council of tonight that we're, we're proposing as part of our application tonight. The first change is all the evergreen trees along that 20-foot buffer will be six-foot at time of planting.
Arborvitae's. You say evergreens, Arborvitae's.
Yeah, Arborvitae's, um, those type of screening trees. Um, the other one that we wanted to, to discuss is, this was largely from, uh, a comment from Mr. Vitale today, is we wanted to maximize more green space over here. So what we've identified is this green space here that's kind of in front of this Chipotle building, essentially shifting this driveway, shifting this parking over to take this green space, put that linear footage over on the east side and give, um, some additional green space to that, to that corner there.
Making it larger like you had it before, at least. It's not as close, but it's, it's larger.
Yeah, and this, um, really, the plan that was presented to, to planning commission, um, this was a comment that was, that was brought up then. And the plan that's in front of you tonight, we shifted that over 30 feet. So we gained 30 feet of additional green space over on that east side. Based on the meeting today on site, we wanted to give a little bit more, largely due to the comments from Mrs., Mr. Vitale. And so we're able to do another 18, 20 feet of additional green space over on that east side. So, you know, we really think working, um, you know, hand-in-hand with the neighbor, with staff, we've really kind of developed a, a pretty effective plan here that we're pretty proud of. Uh, we think it's going to be a great development along 9 Mile. And, um, we have representation from, uh, All Rig. Mr. Kirk is here, and we're happy to answer any questions that the council may have, but thank you for your time.
Questions. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, in terms of the sizes of the buildings, um, the Chipotle, assuming that is their standard footprint.
Yes, sir.
For what they have, so that pretty much drives that size, right? Um, for the additional building, the concern I've got, because before you had five in there, and I, even though that was a thought ambitious, um, still having four, so what would be the width of each of the non-Panera ones? Assuming the end cap is still Panera.
Yes, that's correct. So, um, kind of working from west to east, you have Panera. Then you have a, a restaurant at 20 feet wide. And then, uh, two retail spaces each are also 20 feet wide.
Okay, because I think those would be potentially challenging to fill, so that maybe that's something to look at. I don't think we get too much into interior design on these, right? It's more about the exterior layout, but since you do have four properties there. For example, one of the, um, Parlor Donuts just moved into a, uh, complex in the south end of the city, and they actually had two units. Um, and they basically, because of the parking limitation they have, they can't put any tables in because they don't have parking for indoor seating, even though they basically doubled the size. They, they have one size at 12 Mile, north of 12 Mile, that's like half the size. And they basically have the same operation, but in twice the size. But it's not footage that they are currently able to use because of parking issues. So, um, maybe something for you guys to consider. Um, because that, and, because I do think having five tenants within that property is going to be a challenge. Because once you get into the, you know, basically what we run into there is that we've got, um, an urgent care and three food outlets. When it comes to the parking requirements, it starts to stack up, right? Even though like a couple of them are lunch, dinner, Parlor Donuts definitely more breakfast, but the, uh, Parlor Donuts even goes in some in the afternoon. So you get, you don't really get the overlap of where some parking is for one business versus the other with that size of a business there. So just think something to look out for. I do like, we, this was discussed at the last time, but removing the drive-off Glen Court, we were able to accomplish that. Um, I know that was a big concern for the residents. The concern regarding the three dumpsters is basically of Panera having one, the balance of the other tenants having the other, and then Chipotle having the third, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, what's the access for the, um, trucks that come in? Um, it's like, is it easy get in, unload, get out, or they have to maneuver a lot in that parking lot?
Yeah, so, you know, primarily they hit this one first, work their way up here, hit this one here, and then they have the.
Anticipate it'll all be the same?
That would be the idea ideally, yes.
Okay, so, so I get, who's managing the property once these are built? Development, that would be the development company?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're not be owned individually by franchisee or the companies themselves?
No.
Okay, so would you still maintain the, the dumpster contracts with that to control that?
Yeah, you want to.
So I think that's ideal, you know, that, that way you can control better when they're showing up and not doing any early morning or late evening pickups.
Hi, I'm Gabe Shepherd with All Rig. How, great to see everybody today. Thank you. Uh, it would be, our company would. be, our company would manage the property. Post completion, we'd have one dumpster company servicing the three corrals.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And just to mention one thing on the tenant breakdown, the parking, we do have an excess of nine spaces, so we have a little bit of flexibility.
But if you get a different use in there, because that was in the minutes of, it could drive, have to go to ZBA?
Of course.
Even with our reduced requirements that we passed a few months ago?
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. A couple of questions. The memo states, the petitioner has since revised the plan slightly to reduce the parking, increase the amount of green space. Plans have not yet been provided, but they will be emailed if received prior to Monday evening tonight. Were they received? Did we get those? It wasn't, so they're in the packet?
It's the first set.
Okay, because I was thinking there was another set coming because of what the memo stated.
Yeah, it came early enough.
So, they came early enough that they're in the packet, but the memo states that they'll be emailed if received prior to Monday night, so we have the complete most recent set.
Let's grab the mic, or either one.
That's correct, you have the most recent set. So, I was able to, days after, we were able to upload them prior to them going to you.
Okay. I wish the memo would have been updated, because right now it says the plan has not yet been provided. So, the fact that they're in the memo, in the packet behind that memo is a little unclear to us.
Yeah, I agree. But it is the first set of plans after the memo.
Okay, so we do have the, what we're being asked to...
That is correct.
Approved tonight.
In addition to that, moving the drive approach an additional 18 to 20 feet farther westward than is shown here and in your packet, because what is here is also in your packet.
Okay, so there are changes that we don't have in our packet?
Correct, because they were decided, or they were proposed from 5:00 PM today.
Okay, that makes it really difficult to prepare for a meeting.
Yes.
Okay. We're, let's see. So, we don't need a additional special land use for the Chipotle lane? That's included under the other one, that's granted, and I know they said there's an average of two cars in that, but it's designed for a stacking of eight cars, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And is there a patio in the Chipotle, the new proposed Chipotle building, like an outdoor patio?
Yeah, it's to the direct west of the building, it's 360 square feet.
Okay. Were, a additional notification sent to the residents in the area about the changes. So, hopefully they're watching, because that's, I know we had some concerns previously, and now it's, you know, yes, I know there's no menu and ordering's not occurring, but there is cars stacking and getting their food and that type of. I wish there would have been notification given to the residents, because this does constitute a pretty significant change. I mean, that's why they're here, gain an amendment for a site plan, because there is enough changes justifying that. So, two buildings from one building, you know, two drive-through type facilities versus one, and three dumpsters versus one. So, I kind of wish we had, making the residents more aware of that, just giving the proximity to them. Because this is definitely, I, one, I forgot what the phrasing, one resident used, but worse. And it kind of is, in terms of intensity of use, of what the residents will be experiencing, and they did have some objections to the first one, and now this is two, well, one drive-through, and then the Chipotle lane, and more dumpsters, and just more buildings. And I wish we would have had the opportunity for residents to be more aware of this, so we would have gotten more input, one way or the other. So, thank you to the resident who did know about this and voiced his opinion.
And that's largely the reason that we included the 60 evergreen Arborvitae, Arborvitae's along that 20-foot buffer to the north there.
Mr. Rubello?
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I want to say is, Mr. Vitale, I give you a must-grad award for reaching out to this guy, okay? You already got one, so I take that back. Sorry.
Well, I don't think it was for that, but...
Have you guys, you guys have talked, okay? And you're on board with some of the stuff that he's talking about, what was discussed?
Six foot, and then to monitor his property, so that in fact, you would not damage his property over there, and his landscape, et cetera.
It seems like this fellow here, I forgot your first name, but you seem to know what's, what you want, and stuff like that. And it sounds like you guys talked and met, and got some stuff straightened out. And I know Chris has been for the, a little bit more green space and so forth, and I think you guys, we did a little bit more green space on this the second time around. Okay. So, I would imagine, if this passes, that the fellow there in the robe shirt, and you guys could be point people together, and if there's issues and stuff, please listen to him, okay? Is there any problem with that? I, okay, that fellow. I forgot his name, I'm sorry. 63.
Gabe Shuckman. Does there, zero issues? And just, you know, from the original plan you saw, just to make a note, we added this entire row of trees, so I think 76 trees were added in total. We've added more green space, and we've reduced the total building size by 1,700 square feet. So, if anything, we have less intensity of buildings and additional landscaping since the original plan you saw. So, I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Okay.
We met with Austin today, he has our contact information, Rachel and Jordan. He met with them today, and he has my number, and he can find us anytime. So, we'll be working with him.
Okay. Well, I hold what you said in, you know, regards, and as Ms. Rusi said, thank you for coming, okay? The, I voted for this, you know, the first time, and I know it doesn't look exactly the same, but I think the concerns are the same from your, you know, Hanson Court, and what's behind there. So, I do understand that. So, the thing I like about this is progress down there on the Nine Mile Road area. It falls, you know, Liz, it's in the master plan, as far as trying to connect these two nautical mile to the downtown St. Clair Shores district.
That's correct, yes.
Which I have always been a huge proponent of doing something like that. I believe in the master plans. I know they can, they, you know, hit and miss sometimes with it, things evolve, but one day, those two districts will connect, and even if we're all not here at the time, I doubt that we will be, but it's a step in the right direction. And I think it's, it's good for the area, it's good for the downtown area. I guess it's a midway point really between the Jefferson and Maxwell. I think we're going in the right direction. Let's face it, that property was destroyed, beat up, whatever, and it's been like that for a very long period of time. So, I want to thank you for coming along and trying to do something different down there and make things a little bit better. Okay, I just, again, I want to reiterate that if these folks are having noise issues and things like that, please, I'm sure he can contact any one of us, and then we're gonna, you know, I guess, you know, say something to the city manager. But with that, I will make a motion to approve the request to amend the site plan approval for 22-601-9 Mile to modify the existing approved multi-tenant commercial building and add a free standing building with a pickup window, quiet pickup window, represented by A.L.R.I.G., All Rig USA, with the following conditions. Mechanical equipment must be screened from view, whether at grade or on the roof of the structure, and the petitioner has reduced the parking to add more green space. And that would be my motion, and make sure that...
And that motion, you added, how many additional Arborvitae's?
60.
Well, the number is the same to the current plan that's submitted, but they'll be six feet in height.
Six feet, six feet in height, and then additional green space, moving that over there, correct? What you said, 18?
The east side, approximately 18 feet.
Okay, right. That's part of your motion, Mr. Rubello?
Yes, it is.
Support.
That's supported by Mr. Frederick.
I have a question.
Yep, Mr. Frederick?
I really like the fact that you guys are working with the residents. It's important to all of us up here that that happens. I think the green space is, you know, critically important, especially right there, because it does get harder as you get towards the downtown. I'm hoping at some point in time that there'll be a lot of walkability over to this, from downtown and from the neighborhood, so that might even eliminate some of the, some of the car traffic. I said this last time we were here, there's a telephone pole in the middle of the sidewalk over there. Can we get rid of that somehow? Can we figure out how to get it out of the middle of the sidewalk?
We will work with the developer, and I think it's DTE on that.
I know, and they're not easy to, or fun to work with, but, but it's in the middle of the sidewalk. All right? So, if we can get that out of these guys, I'll know where that telephone pole is. But I really, I mean, I can't say it enough, the fact that you're working with them is awesome. The next big thing that'll probably, after it's built, is going to be the lighting, and the screening of that lighting, so it's not shining in their bedrooms and their backyards and all of that. So, I just want to make sure that if it does, that you guys, I know you know how to get ahold of us, right? So, I'm hoping that you're going to call us and then at least, or have some communication with them to make sure that that lighting is not going to be obtrusive, Gabe, or intrusive.
Yeah, they're all going to be shielded, directed in towards the site, and they're going to be fully compliant with me. Yeah.
So, the lighting will be onto the building and not from the building?
It'll be onto the building, correct. So, it'll be facing away from the residential.
Okay, all right.
Towards the commercial side.
All right. And we just want to make sure with the, with the, as light bleeds, you still get foot candles even behind it, so just make sure that we're, we're keeping track to that for these guys. And I want to thank Mr. Vitale for his hard work, and, I should have called that, I came with you up there, but I appreciate you guys meeting with them. And Liz, I saw you out there too. I was joking with you earlier, I thought you were planting flowers or something out there, so, okay.
On the light issue, we'll look at lower, the current light poles on the plant are 20 feet, we'll look at lowering that, so that would give us a risk to be going into the residence.
That'd be huge. That'd be huge. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Vitale?
Okay. Noted environmental activist, Chris Vitale, pushing for more green space.
That's going on your permanent record.
So, I want to, first of all, I want to thank Liz, because you and I have done a lot of back and forth on this, and stopped in your office and things like that, and you've been really good. I want to thank the developers for developing the site and for being flexible in terms of, you know, locations, and basically trying to make a better project. So, pictures being worth a thousand words, I somehow managed to get back from that meeting a little after 6:00 and put a PowerPoint together before getting here at 7:00.
Oh, Lord.
So, just to kind of help visualize it, if we could go to that.
Popcorn.
Uh-oh. Here. No, not, not foiled. Okay. This is a very unremarkable photograph of where a fire hydrant used to be, and it's actually located on the property. I believe the practice now is that we locate these on the easement on the right of way, so it doesn't look like a fire plug is coming back to that spot, which gave us the opportunity, if you can go to the next one, to where I've, where I've circled in red is where they had created an island for that fire hydrant. Getting rid of that gives us two parking spaces and lets us move that Egress driveway to the west. Now, what I've kind of got at the bottom is sort of my, my dream scenario, where with just the removal of, I think, three more, four more parking spaces, you would get to still what's required by the city. It'd be a little less than what you were shooting for. It would be great if somebody made a call to Chipotle and said, hey, are you willing to green up the site by accepting three less parking spaces? Because in that scenario, we would go from the green space being that light blue blob to being that large blue blob, and it would, it would really help. But I understand sometimes, you know, you swing for the fence, and you get the second base, and you're happy. But that would be the dream scenario. Also, kind of like I said, it does show that fire plug was unnecessary, that, that was unnecessary. So, we picked up another 18, 20 feet. Can you go to the next one? Now, I'm sure this is going to get addressed, but I just want to show people what some of the issue is. It may be a little tough to see, but that red line represents a straight line, and you can take a look at the taillight bar on that SUV and see the way that this site is pitched. It is so much taller when you're actually at the building versus when you get to that six-foot fence. You go to the next one. So, what I did there was, I took a picture, if you can see on the very right picture where that SUV is parked, I stood there, and I took the picture that's on the far left. You see, right into that house with the six-foot wall. And then as I walked up to the wall, then it disappeared. But the point is, the people in the restaurant are going to be having that other view. So, it will be very important to get the grading correct on this, so that a six-foot wall accomplishes the goal of the six-foot wall, which is to screen. Have another slide? Oh, okay, I didn't remember. And yes, I also want to thank Austin Fletcher. He was actually the one who pointed out, and that's what the great thing is about working with residents, is they know, I don't know where every fire plug in the city is, but he knew that had been taken out, so that gave the opportunity to move things. So, I want to thank him for that and for being willing to engage on this whole thing. The hope is that that footing that's there can be reused, looks like it's actually held up pretty well, and shouldn't have to invade into the root system or anything of any of this current landscaping. So, that having been said, I'll be a yes vote.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Rubello, supported by Mr. Frederick to approve the request to amend the site plan for 22-601-9 Mile Road, which had the additional size of the Arborvitae's and the additional green space. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Six to one it passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to it.
Did Matt cancel too many things?
Hmm?
Did Matt cancel too many things?
Maybe.
Yeah, I thought it was just 7A.
Six.
Yeah, he did, he did.
You canceled too many things on the agenda.
Just E.
His E is canceled.
Just E.
On that one.
The one at the, the one at the door was correct.
Right. I appreciate your, I appreciate you getting us out of here early.
Okay.
Labor attorney keeps texting us.
You guys want, all right, we're going to move on here. So, item seven is a public hearing on the proposal for fiscal year '25, '26 budget and millage rates. We'll open for a public hearing. Anyone that wants to make a comment? Yes, Mr. Mike Guto.
Butler, you can speak.
Oh, no, you're going to speak at the mic, Mike.
Okay, thanks for giving us the opportunity. Is there a time limit like there was before, or I'm not going to take this forever, I know it's already a long day, but for the, I believe it's 7A, is on there the Lake St. Clair Clean Water Initiative?
Yes.
As part of the tax millage.
It is.
As I said before, you guys have been the leader in making things happen. Other communities are following your guys' initiatives. This is awesome. However, I want to state this. I don't think any resident knows what this is even about, including me, and my whole thing has always been about the water. I haven't heard anything at all about this. So, one, how much money is this coming into the city by taxing this? What's the actual dollar amount? Two, where is that money being earmarked to be used for? How is it going to be, three, how long is this going to be going on for? There's so many things I have questions about this that I would like to know about, and I think the residents would like to know about that as well, too. The other thing I want to bring up is, our water rates are already ridiculous. And so, by taxing this, and trust me, I want more than anything for something to happen in this lake to be cleaned up and cleared, more than anybody. But I guess my question is, the water rates in St. Clair Shores are high, extremely high, compared to other areas. Detroit, it's $2.50 per unit. Roosevelt, $2.82 per unit. Frazier, $5.48 per unit. St. Clair Shores, $6.25 per unit. There's also millage I see on there proposed to increase the sewage on the water bills as well, too. I am not opposed to that being used, as long as we know what that's being used for. I don't know what that's being used for, I don't know what that's going towards. So, I guess my question to you guys is, I don't know how it works, you're just going to take here today, and you're like, yay, you're named? I don't know. But if you, there's questions that I have that I think other people, if they know about this, it was even going, I didn't know about this even going on until today. I just saw it posted. I just saw it posted and I was like, oh my gosh, this is an awesome thing, I want to talk about this. I know you gave the other person an hour to talk about parking and all this other stuff, and I got two minutes to talk about, so I'm trying to get this in. I guess my point is, I want to continue on with what you guys are leading the example. But there's questions that I have about the language and usage, and you sit in here and you hear about everybody talking about, what does this mean, this guy can park over here and ask it to be all of a sudden parking for this? You think about, and I'm thinking about that for the same thing, for this Lake St. Clair Clean Water Initiative. What is that being used towards? How much money is it going towards? Where's the money going from? How much is it equal to this, to this city that we're going to be taxing? Is that dollar value a million dollars? Is it $5 million? What's the total amount that that's going to be used? And can we use that towards actually cleaning up the muck that's along the shoreline? And can we work with the DEQ along with the residents? Because again, I know this is a tough subject. You guys don't own the water. Your jurisdiction ends at the city guidelines, so I know it's a whole thing that we've been talking about, discussing with. But the community and the movement is here and it's been happening. And a lot of it is because of your guys' efforts of leading the way. I just have a lot of questions about what is it in there? The language being used, the money being used and processed? Where is it going towards and how do we best appropriate that, I guess? That's, these are questions, I have no idea how this works, but there you go. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to talk about the bill, the budget or the millage rates? Anyone else before I close the public hearing? Close the public hearing. Dustin, let's answer a couple of his questions. So number one, the length of time when this, this runs out?
Yep, so Lock St. Clair Millage was a 30-year millage to be able to pay for a lot of the bonds that was used to be able to clean the lake 30 years ago. It was a collaborative effort with the county, other jurisdictions and St. Clair Shores. That millage actually runs out in 2030. So it does only have about five years left on that. Currently, a lot of those bonds are in the still process of being paid. About $1.4 million of that goes towards that. Well, some of those bonds did just fall off approximately two to three years ago. So it is collecting a little bit of money that we are utilizing to help with our combined sanitary sewer system to try to uncombine some of those to prevent that sewage from running the lake. We're actually trying to partner that with some grants, as you mentioned earlier. We were very successful of receiving some money from John James and some other congressmen as well. Part of that, though, is that money is being held up right now. We're waiting for that to come through. Once it comes through, that's just phase one of numerous projects that we are looking at. So we do bring in front of council any projects that may be to help clean this. I know the Jefferson Relief Project right now, that's going on with the S U M S D. There might be a little bit of money that on our end that we're utilizing, potentially could come out of that Lock St. Clair. Anything that we can do to clean the lake, that's what we're utilizing. But this millage is set to expire in 2030 as it is, was voted on at that time.
No, I think we're done, I mean.
Feel free, though, I am available.
Absolutely.
Anytime. Yeah, feel free, set up employment, I can go over a lot of that, show you those numbers. As well as, I did lay this up here as well, that I can get you, this is some of the water rate with our surrounding communities as well. And what they do charge. Because one thing it is with the water rates that we are going to talk about later is how the communities set their water rate, either based on commodity charge or fixed charges. We do weigh ours heavily more on commodity rather than the fixed charge. However, that gives you kind of a total analysis with our surrounding communities. And as you'll see, we're actually are not as one of the highest ones, we're actually kind of right in the middle, if actually even closer to one of the lower end when it comes to water and sewer rates combined. But I guess we can.
And there's a couple of questions, we'll get to them. I think the other one was, the mill's at 1.71, so what are we at? Probably a million, 750,000, a million eight? I mean, I think you asked how much it brings in a year.
About 3.4.
Oh, yeah, so it's $2 million per mill, so.
The bonds are about 1.7.
Huh?
The bonds are about 1.7.
Yeah, but it's generating.
3.4.
3.4 million dollars, that was to the, to the city to pay the. And paying for our bonds and, and for sewer separation that we hope to do some in the future and to help some of the, the project that is going right now down, which is that five-foot pipe that's going down from nine mile all the way to Rio Vista, adding additional capacity. There'll be issues here that the city has to take care of regarding roads, so it's all part of that, it's all. Think we answered that. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, and just kind of one additional thing, when the first set of bonds were paid off, we had a set of 20-year bonds and that's kind of where we're able to build up the fund balance now is what we've been doing last few years for looking ahead to separation projects. There is specific language about what that fund, what those monies can be used for when it was passed 25 years ago, right?
2001, maybe.
So we, because I know it can be used for sanitary systems in that, I don't recall if it could be used outside of that, actually in the lake, so I think that's something Bob would need to look into, because I think that was one of the other suggestions.
Charter amendment, so we got to.
Right, there were specific uses that were listed in there that that is limited to, so we have to stay within those confines.
Totally, the good point.
So, yeah, so I think Dustin did a good job in terms of explaining what the Clean Water Initiative millage is and with, basically as a summary, the street's millage goes up, which was approved by the voters. But overall, do headly reductions in that the overall, with the exception of the streets going up, there'll be a slight increase, that's basically because of the streets, but it's not as much as just what the streets is itself. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the millage rates.
Support. Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Frederick. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Just two quick points on the mill rate chart that was published for this hearing. As I talked with Dustin today, the charter state limit subtotal is listed as 24.5986. It's actually, if you add it up, 24.8486, which should have been obvious because there's only one fractional decimal number, which is a police and fire operating millage, which carries forward .8486, so it would have to end in .8486, not 5986. The second thing is, the streets published, millage was listed as two mills. It's actually, I think, in the chart that's attached on the last page of this item, 1.9716, because it's been impacted by headly, even though it hasn't been levied yet.
Right.
So it's not two, it's 1.9716, which then obviously impacts the total amount.
Blows it.
Yeah, so just point out those two things and then.
End the motion to the.
Yeah, to the.
Headly rollback. Exact rate.
Okay, thank you. And then just a quick follow-up about the Lake St. Clair Clean Water Initiative. So this is a 30-year bond that expires in like five years, it's been 25 years on the tax bill, right? So it's not a new thing, it's something that's been a source of.
Yes, I said 2001, it could be off, it could be a year or something, it could be 2000.
25 years, okay.
Yes, 25.
So it's just, it's not a new thing, it's something that's been collected for a number of years.
It might have been voted on 99 and the construction started in 2001, as I sit here and think about it.
Okay. I was just wanting to.
Sure.
Make sure that was clarified, okay.
And to clarify, actually, what the mayor just said too, so it is 30 years, but because the construction projects did start a year pretty much after that, we do have some of the bonds that actually don't get paid for until 2031. So we will, as a council, have to make sure that we save enough money and the reserves to be able to pay for the substantial years that we do have to.
Thank you.
Mr. Rebel.
Yeah, just a quick question for what we're doing with the alleys, is that going to fall under what area here? The streets?
So in, it'll be up to council's direction, but in the budget, we budgeted for it to be in the local street millage is where the money was budgeted in the budget. So if the budget gets approved at our next council meeting, that's where the alleys funding is reserved for.
I think it's 150,000 that was put in there, as I recall.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Frederick to approve the millage rates. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven to zero. You. Second ordinance amendment for sanitary sewer rates. Mr. Lent?
So in your packet, you will see there is revisions that are at the table. In the past, we had, the utility fund was all combined with water and sanitary sewer. That has been separated now out for, I think, the past five years. But at last year's council meeting, it was recommended by Councilwoman Rusi that when we start doing these ordinances in the future, we make sure we have them separate. So the water has its own ordinance, the sewer has its own ordinance. So the information that you received in your packet is the exact same information when it comes to the numbers and the miller, and the, not millers, and the water rate that is being set. What is different is the sanitary sewer language is only pertaining to the sanitary sewer now. It does not show what the water, what the sewer and what the combination rate is, but it'll just show what are your commodity charges and then also what our fixed costs are. So you'll see both of those in the sewer relating to the exact ordinance language. So that's why the change was in here, the graphs all may look the same, it's just a little bit shorter and shrunk down. So I want to thank Councilman Karen for bringing that up and then Councilman Rusi for making the ordinance recommendation last year.
Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Another recommendation, read in the resolution for the, this is an ordinance, so there needs to be a resolution to change it, there needs to be a posting. I think we'll have some issues with the final paragraph about the locations of posting of the new ordinance or the ordinance, the amended ordinance.
Because of the fire hall unless.
Yeah, unless we're going to like zip tie it to the construction fence, I don't think we'll be posting them at the police station at 27665 Jefferson or the fire hall at 26700 Harper. So that needs to be updated, too. And it also applies to 7C as well, because I guess we use the same resolution template from last year where that would have been able to happen, but now because we're down two buildings, that needs to be updated. I think last time, I think, I want to say it was the precincts for the elections, but I'm not positive. We did state the police and fire temporary building at St. Lucy, so it can be probably updated to that.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rebel.
So really what we're doing is we're separating the water and storm and the sanitary, everything, just for clarity.
Yeah, I mean, because our ordinance now has a specific sanitation ordinance and because we do have a commodity charge for sewer and a fixed rate for sewers, as we do for water. And it's just keeping them in the same document. And it does make it easier for clarity, correct?
Perfect, okay. Well, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the utility rate ordinance, 25.060, chapter 42, section 42.2882, comma, 6, comma, 8, wastewater rates. Charges and fees is recommended by the finance director and city manager with the changes.
To the resolution.
To the resolution.
Support. Moved by Mr. Rebel, supported by Mr. Karen. All in favor? All opposed, 7C. Thank you. Seven to zero. Mr. Lent?
7C. In front of you is the, once again, amended language that just talks about water and doesn't put the two together. We are recommending the overall of 5.4 increase, which would equate to $3.89 per month or $11.67 per quarter. With the recommendation to change the locations of where we present the St. Lucys rather than the police and fire buildings that are in current construction.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, and basically just kind of address, because it's, it's a large increase, but it's partly from Gleywa, but it's also from us. The things that the water fund ends up being used for is not only to pay for the water we get from Gleywa, which is only about 30% of the total budget, but it's to pay our personnel to be on staff, to fix all the water main breaks, which, you know, like this winter is almost like one a day at least, if not multiple ones a day. Is to improve the infrastructure going forward, water main replacements, which, you know, basically for each section we're doing now, it's almost a million dollars per. And then this year, we're also, this also includes in the budget, that'll be at the next meeting, starting to replace the water meters. The last time we did that was 13 years ago. The transmitters basically have a 10-year life and, you know, and with anything that wears out, there's, they can wear out at different times. And we're probably starting to hit a little more of a peak time of those wearing out. And so that's going to be additional expense that has to go through there to pay for. And that's basically what the water rates get used for. I think jumping back to the sanitary, the bulk of that rate, 60% of that goes through the S U M S D, sanitary district, eventually down to Gleywa. So that is a bigger portion, gets paid to the outside, but still significant amount of money internally that's required. And that is for sewer cleaning, to keep it free tree roots, obstructions, inspections, all the maintenance that goes on at the time we're doing lining, to extend the life of the sewers. So there's a lot of capital projects that are in there as well, that follow the city to, to maintain. It is a large bill. It's not as large as what I think people pay DTE or consumers over the year, but it's still large. We are still larger than some other communities. Some other communities do not have the aging infrastructure, nor have the type of infrastructure that has a lot of, you know, 25% of the city combined. So where rainwater goes into the sewage line and then we have to pay through those entities to have rainwater to be processed and to be cleaned. So that does drive our expenses up and it's unfortunate. One of the things when we get to the budget next, you know, meeting is that, you know, we do push that the money that does get done in, it is being spent on projects, on fixing issues and importantly, gain ahead of issues. And I think we've been doing that for many years now, so it does get wisely spent and unfortunately, it can be expensive.
Thank you, and I think it's important because these are not like sexy issues here and, but, but you have to maintain your infrastructure and I think we do a good job of doing that. We can't turn our, turn our blind eye because it's under the ground, right? It's important and we need it, and I think you made a good point of that. And again, it's, people can see parks and that, but you need this under the ground improved and taken care of, too. So, and I think we have done that over the years. Mr. Vitale?
Yes, just want to point out something on the GLWA charges. I think we've rehashed over and over again, they're increasing their charge to us by 5.5%. And then we're passing along as a percentage, I know I just read it on here, 5.4?
Yes.
So we're passing along 5.4 of a 5.5% increase. But here's the, one of the most important things from this is that there's a water sales projection and that declines a half a percent. And the, and the problem is, is that every time water bills rates go up, people use less water, understandably so. They say, I'm not going to water my lawn, let God take care of it, and they use less water. But the problem is, is that the fixed cost to operate the water system increase every year. So now you have these rate increases that have to keep up with fixed costs and you've got the vicious circle of declining usage, there's less to spread that cost around with the never-ending increasing fixed costs. Really, the way to solve this is going to have to be at the state level, at a level above city government. And actually, it's funny because I'm seeing the 5.5% increase and it kind of triggered in my head the idea of a Prop A that said your property tax assessment can only increase by 5% a year or the rate of inflation, whichever is less. So what we really need to have is a Prop A for water bills. So unfortunately, that's at the state level and, you know, if you want to have a grassroots campaign and you want to come talk about it at the city council meeting or something like that, I'm all in favor of it and I'll help you. But in the meantime, if we don't pass these rate increases along, then we just have to take money from elsewhere in the budget, which is ultimately taxpayer dollars, too.
And I'll just add a little bit to what Councilman Vitale said, that a decade ago, or I guess 11 years ago, it was Detroit Water and Sewerage, now becoming Great Lakes Water and Sewerage, right? And that was called the grand bargain and was a decade that the grand bargain said that they couldn't go more than 4%. That, that tenure has now expired, it expired. This is the first year of the grand bargain not being part of it and they had the ability to go over 4%. And so I would tell you that in different meetings with Great Lakes Water, I think we're going to see in the years to come, definitely rates that are higher than 4%. They continue to tell you that, tell us and tell other communities that they have a large infrastructure problem and that they have to spend hundreds of millions of dollars to update that. So I think we're going to see that over time here, that, you know, these fives and some places have sevens. You know, it, wasn't it seven when they started for the water? I think here, wasn't it seven? Then they had the public meeting and went, and went it down. Maybe it was 6.4, then it went down to 5.4, I can't recall, but I mean, it was higher than they had the public meeting and went down. down. So just, they're coming for more, for higher numbers in the future. Mr. Rabello.
Yeah. With what Mr. Vitale said, a lot of, it's mind boggling to people that they're using less water and the bills are still going up. So, you know, that's something people, you know, need to understand and I need to understand it too because here with less people, you know, using water in my family, I, the bills keep going up.
I just, I tell you, they, the Great Lakes Water has more than a billion dollars in debt. So those kinds of payments don't go away, even though the water goes down, right? Or your bill goes down, you're using less water, the debt is still there on Great Lakes Water Authority and that, that is what's keep, continued rises, the costs.
And the other thing that he mentioned is the rate of inflation. The water is higher than the rate of inflation. Just looking around the rest of the country, we seem to be a little bit luckier with that. But that is what, you know, that's what spins people out, that, you know, your water's getting, you know, more than some of the groceries you're buying. And listen, we're lucky that we live in a community, we're lucky we live in a country, a state where, you know, you can go to the faucet and your water's working. A lot of people don't have that luxury.
Clean water too.
Clean water. And we're just, I guess, in the bad years of the aging infrastructure and fewer resources and that's just, that's just how it is. Hopefully all that stuff gets better one day, but we're still lucky to be here, living where we're at. We live in a good area and let's, let's hope, let's hope it gets better. And it's tough, but where I think really what's going on with us, you know, we're helping someone out years from now by fixing all this stuff up now and maybe people that are coming behind us don't have to deal with some of the stuff, especially as we fix the infrastructure. Those are big bills. Thank you, Mayor.
Motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion to recommend, where am I here?
You're going to adopt the recommended amendment to the Water Ordinance Code 25.260, Chapter 56, Section 4410, water rate discounts and et cetera.
Correct. That's what I was going to do.
Changes to the resolution.
There's more changes he has under resolution.
And supported by Mr. Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Seven to zero. 7D is set storm user rates for fiscal year 26. Mr. Lent.
Once again, so as a result of the lawsuit several years ago, the city was required to change the way it bills for its stormwater sewer expenses. This user charge is based on the pervious and impervious areas on each parcel. As you can kind of see in the chart attached, the stormwater projects is 2.629 million dollars. This fee has stayed right around, 2023 is about 2.5. Last year they go down, we did a little bit less capital projects. This is billed to residential, commercial condos, government, schools, waterfront, SADs, city right of ways, county right of way, state right of ways. A lot of these fees are actually paid internally with our internal budgets, with the city right of ways, you know, being our local Act 51 money, county and state being our major funding government, schools are actually paid by the schools. So this is actually spread across, so about half of this project is internal charges to our own areas that we actually pay this charge as well as municipalities. The rate is actually .015091. So it's one and a half pennies per impervious acre and all the information is in your packet. If you have any questions.
Mr. Karen. Thank you. Yeah, just in terms of talking a little bit about this goes towards, so we've got multiple pumps that go all along Jefferson that basically during rainstorms move stormwater out to the lake. So that, this funds all that, the electric bills, maintenance, the crew to maintain all those. So if we wanted to prevent street flooding and that, that's what all those pumps are for. And I believe this year we're also targeting a upgrade for the Alger Pump Station, which services a very large neighborhood along the Milk River there as well. And so that's why this, the stormwater expenses for this year are up a bit over the previous year, which drives that bit of the rate increase that's listed there in the motion. So with that, I make a motion to approve the rate as presented.
Move by Mr. Karen.
I'll support it with a question.
Supported by Mr. Frederick. Mr. Frederick.
On the commercial stuff, are we, this, this is a one-time billing annually? Is this correct? Build out one time? In other words, they would have just got their bill probably last month, maybe?
I would have to check with the assessor and get back with you, but I believe you are correct, but I, I don't know that often.
But on residential, it's, it's quarterly, right?
I would have to get with the assessor. The assessor bills it all out as part of their process.
I think it probably varies by size of height.
Well, I think, I don't know, I got a couple of calls on the commercial side, people that got a bill, wondered what the heck it was. Maybe we should take a look at that bill. Maybe have it, so there's a little more information on it as to what it exactly is for and maybe the explanation on what you've got, all the cement going into the thing and, you know, this is the calculation. That might help. Let me say that might help. Not that we don't like phone calls, we're talking to our businesses here.
But Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Seven to zero. 7E will come back at the next meeting. 8A is request for air conditioning. Do we have any of that yet?
We do. It's provided from the outside air.
Okay.
It's really far away from us, so.
Request to allocation of funding under cost sharing agreement with Moncom County Department of Roads of 10 Mile Little Mac Intersections. We're going to get some money here from 10 for the county.
Some, but we're going to spend some more money to do that. So this, this agenda item may feel like deja vu all over again. If you recall, when this last came to council in February, Councilwoman Rusi raised a question about why the cost share agreement was so much less than the AEW construction estimate. The reason for that is that it was incorrect. So what the county had sent to us requested a total cost share by the city of $129,280. The project is actually $403,939, which puts our share at $201,969. It's still an incredible deal to rebuild the intersection of 10 Mile and Little Mac.
Which needs it badly.
Which needs it very badly. This work is not proposed until calendar year 2026, but we are required now to sign the cost share agreement so that engineering can begin.
Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. Yeah, this was funny. This was really funny because I remember this one, so I looked up the minutes and Ms. Rusi asked about the total costs, project cost at 20, you know, 258,000, asked how they arrived at that amount. All we have right now is AEW's preliminary estimate from 2023, which is 403937. So, and I point out, this was from 2023, but things don't get cheaper, right? And the packet, the project cost is 403937, so it's substantially more than the estimate from AEW compared to the amount they are now defined as project cost. She asked if the scope changed. Mr. Babcock said we were required to get an estimate and AEW was using their numbers. The county bids out country packaging throughout the entire county, they get better prices, asked how the numbers were adjusted. When it goes out to bid, it could be different as well, so that was explained, I guess incorrectly. Because right now we're being asked for, for, the total project cost, we're being asked for half of it is 403939, which is $1 off from that AEW estimate from 2023 that I had asked about. Which I think is funny, it didn't raise other people's, before it got to us, given it was being presented by our GPW director, that it didn't raise any eyebrows about how off that was. And in fact, it was explained away quite nicely, but that's fine. So I guess my follow-up question is, are we certain this is the amount now, is the county certain this is the amount now, given the estimate was from November 2023 and we know stuff hasn't gotten cheaper?
I would say that the explanation was the best that we had at the time when the county presented the cost share agreement. Since then, the county has gone back and realized its mistake and resent the cost share.
It's really funny. It's just really funny. I'm not a construction person, I'm totally not, this is not my area of expertise whatsoever and this raised so many red flags to me.
Sure.
And this was just me looking at the packet, you know, sitting on my bed on Sunday night, you know, before the meeting, this is like, wait, this is completely very suspicious. But, so anyway, then it goes, Ms. Rusi requesting more details on the county cost breakdown to contingencies in Exhibit A, which we have here with the updated numbers. She said, that's me, there are some blanks in Exhibit A as well as no contingencies and we still have no contingencies and still some blanks on things, including things that appeared in the AEW estimate, but we're still arriving at the same amount basically as the AEW estimate. So once again, I'm asking for more details on the Exhibit A that we didn't get from the county again since February and hopefully they'll come back and say, whoops, because this is very silly. This is a very silly and fun agenda item for me because it's like, oh my God, it actually was exactly to the dollar, I guess one dollar off to the AEW estimate, but that's fine. I'll move to approve. Yeah, I do want the follow-up I had asked for in February on Exhibit A because we didn't get that.
Okay.
I'll support with a question.
Move by Ms. Rusi, supported by Mr. Frederick. Mr. Frederick.
So this is probably more pressing as we read the justification paragraph in here and it's got the asphalt located east of intersection on 10 Mile is experiencing minor alligator cracking just before the transition to concrete pavement. There's also a major trip hazard located on a concrete sidewalk ramp, which requires the ramp to be replaced. Can we double check that and maybe do some preliminary repairs since that is, I know we're coming on summer, but
Right.
the end of the day, that is, that is used by Jefferson Middle, Lakeview High School, all of those. And I would certainly, since, since we now know and it's in the open that we know it's a trip hazard.
Sure.
Let's make sure we get that fixed. Thank you.
Mr. Rabello.
Okay, so this project in particular would run from what to what?
I don't have an exact date. It would be the county's on their construction schedule, the design and engineering.
How many feet have you, did like?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's just the intersection.
Just the intersection.
I saw that, I just couldn't, I just couldn't understand, just the intersection.
It is the intersection, yes.
How long will the project take?
That I do not know.
I'm sort of going someplace with this. There's a rhyme and a reason.
I don't know, six weeks, two months.
I'll stay on the road with you.
Huh?
I mean, yeah, you're right.
It's not, it's not a long project, no.
Right, but you got to shove, you got to shift the lanes and they got to cure. It's, it won't be that quick as you think, like it's a small area because, but it's the intersection, so it'll take a little while. I mean.
Respectfully, two months to me during the summertime is pretty quick.
In the summer?
No.
In the summer?
2026.
It's in 2026.
Okay, so as, okay, I don't want to make a long run of this. My concern.
Yes.
If I have a concern, we're doing construction on Jefferson Avenue and 10 Mile obviously is a leadway into Jefferson, okay? They already have some issues with traffic and, you know, and business and traffic and, you know, hurting the businesses and that type of stuff, even though that Jefferson project is, you know, that's got to be done, okay? And I guess my concern is, are we going to cut off more traffic going into the area of Jefferson? And I know it's Little Mac, so it's probably, I don't know, a mile from Little Mac to?
It's a, I mean, relatively fair distance between the Little Mac intersection and the Jefferson and 10 Mile intersection. At that point, the nine-mile work will be complete, so we'll be moving traffic through. And when I say that, I think, I think that SEMSD's project schedule in '26 has you north of, I mean, I don't, I'm not even sure they're 100% at 10 Mile, although it's close in summer of '26.
Do you understand my concern is just?
I do.
Okay.
Sure.
All right.
I do. And the one other thing that I would point out with this, and maybe this somewhat answers your question, Councilwoman Rusi, is that these monies from the county are monies that we apply for. So the AEW estimate is, was at our request so that we could put together the application to the county. I would suspect, and we will clarify this, that AEW, knowing the county's timeline, would have put an escalator on the project. That's what I suspect. We'll clarify. But the work that is being proposed is 100% at our request to the county and the county is saying, yes, we accept your application and yes, we'll pay for 50% of that. But the entire project is managed by the county. So this isn't something that we then ultimately put out the bids and, and do the work.
I understand that completely. The fact that we controlled the estimate, the application for how much we thought the project would show, raised even more red flags when the county comes back with a very lower amount in the cost estimate as they did for, in the cost share agreement as they did for February, that should have warranted a little bit more questioning from certain members of administration prior to it being brought to us for execution.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Rabello?
We'll say that this body, we'll just say this body voted no, okay, on this particular project at this particular time. What would be the, the end result of that?
She would, I don't think she can answer the question of that, but we would give the money back and they would go spend it somewhere else. We don't have that many areas. I know Harper, of course, we all know Harper's part of the county, but we don't have that many areas to, that we can get sharing in here and who knows if we get the money back or when we get it, maybe we get it back in '29, who, who knows? When you go to these meetings, there's, I don't want to say fighting, but, you know, the townships are fighting for every dollar to get everything, so it's, it's, it's competitive to say the least to make sure you get the money and the area needs help.
Yes.
I mean, I understand your concerns, but I. Mr. Karen.
Thank you. And I think in terms of some of the other concerns, especially in terms of traffic going through, anytime they've done these intersections, they always maintain directional traffic, like the road's not going to get closed and that, and you're diverted someplace else. So it'll still be through traffic, it'll be slowed down a little bit as you get through it. There'll be lane shifting because to the mayor's point of you do one set of concrete, you let it cure, it's got to cure for seven days and then they change lanes and then they do the next set and that, and they work their way around. So, yeah, so, and I think, and this is just in terms of our projects with the county because they're not coming in doing full road replacements, they're busy building new roads in the north and that. And so this is, if we want our roads fixed, this is a deal that we get from them, right?
Yes.
Correct. And it's 50 cents on the dollar.
Right.
It is, yes.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Nope, it's already gone. Moved by Ms. Rusi, supported by Mr. Frederick to approve the cost sharing agreement with the county. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8B is request to approve the purchase of a Kubota V-Series RTV utility vehicle. Mr. Tom Mel.
Hey, Mel. Thanks for waiting.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Tom Mel from the Parks Department. Between the time, the temperature and the turkey dinner I ate before I came here, it was a hard time staying awake out there. Here to request the approval of purchase of this Kubota RTV utility vehicle. It's a highly versatile utility vehicle equipped with an enclosed cab, a utility bed designed to transport landscape materials and other equipment. While the original capital outlay was budgeted for a smaller vehicle with limited capabilities, a broader evaluation the department needs identified the Kubota RTV as a more effective option. This vehicle would be used primarily at Kuybey Road during the spring, summer and fall season and would be moved to the Civic Arena in the winter. It would help in the clearing of the snow with all the sidewalks, with the expansion of the senior center, the maintenance staff at the arena, Brandon Abel and Sean Adam came to us after the winter season and said, we have to do something over here, we, we can't keep up with the snow. to do something over here. We, we can't keep up with the snow with all the sidewalks over there. So with that being said, we reevaluated the purchase of a lesser utility vehicle that would be used just at Kite and Row, looked at upgrading that where we could use multiple function and bring it down in the winter and help with some of these issues. The vehicle is equipped with all the necessary street travel, turn signals and lights, and it could be used in other areas of the city, primarily like the tunnel of lights, and also on other city sidewalks that we are responsible for.
Dustin?
Yep. So, yeah, Recreation during the winter came to us and was kind of asking that. At the time, we only had $12,000 in the motor pool. However, with the purchase of the DPW vehicles coming significantly under budget, the fire engine did go over budget, but still in that budget, every piece of equipment that was capital, or was put in the capital budget would now be purchased once we do this. And there is money still remaining in that account to be able to cover this without a budget amendment.
Mr. Frederick?
Just, just sort of a tongue-in-cheek question, Tommy. I think the next thing you're gonna say is, can we use CDBG funds from the senior center to help pay for part of this? But obviously, we don't need to.
Right.
Okay.
Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Have we tested this particular piece of equipment?
We have, we, Jeff from the golf course, the senior tenor, had this, had other golf courses he worked at, this brand of equipment. Comparative pricing, it was cheaper than the Toro, which we have looked at, the John Deere, which we have looked at. Our local contractor, LSI, uses a fleet of Kuboto. In fact, I think you've probably seen them on the Nautical Mile Water and the Flowers.
Yes.
It's the orange utility vehicle, so it'd be identical, something like that. And they're very happy with this piece of equipment, and they recommended this as an option for us, which works out great because it's cheaper than the other two options.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure that we tested it out and compared the functionality between the other models. Okay, great. Thank you.
Motion be in order?
I'm moved.
Support.
Moved by Ms. Rusi, supported by Mr. Frederick to approve the purchase of the Kubota RTV in the amount of $25,388.14. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. Item nine is consent agenda.
I'd like to separate 9G.
G. And then will you make a motion for the other ones?
I'll make a motion to approve the rest.
Support.
The support was made by Mr. Frederick. Everything but 9G. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Mr. Karen on 9G?
Yeah, so this is the request for resolution to allow the city to accelerate the 2005 winter tax bills under $100 to the 2025 summer tax bill. This is normally before us earlier in the year because it does need to get transferred to the county. So I just want to make sure administration knows who it needs to get sent to. And the county only has one more meeting before tax bills get made in July. So is it on their agenda that this is coming to them?
I, I, we'll have to check with that. It got brought up as what we need to approve. Finance was going through the stuff, and I know Abby, our clerk, brought it up. So we will get with the county, and I can answer that question.
Okay, because talking to my contact at the county today, they're making agendas tomorrow.
Okay. And we will get a hold of them first thing tomorrow morning.
Okay. So make a motion to approve.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr.
And Abby, thank you for catching that.
Mr. Frederick, all in favor?
Aye.
All, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Vitale.
Yeah, I was actually gonna ask to pull G too, but for a different reason.
All righty.
That being that, you know, it's been multiple years now where, you know, we still do this for the $100, but there aren't as, nearly as many winter assessments anymore that are $100. Could we perhaps draft a resolution that we could send to all our state-level representatives, asking them to up this to $200? Because as I remember being told, this was a $40,000 a year savings and mailing to the city, and it really has no impact on the majority of people who are paying a mortgage. They're getting billed the same amount anyways. So this is an easy slam dunk to save the city some money and to save multiple communities around Michigan some money. You know, can, can we ask to get this raised from 100? Because it's antiquated at 100. Inflation and all the, you know, and the values of homes going up. Not many people are getting that $100 winter tax bill anymore. So can we maybe find the right, the sweet spot here that saves us the $40,000 a year if we up it to 200? And then come up with some language and send that to all our state reps?
Okay, and we'll look.
Maybe assessing would have input on that.
Mr. Karen, do you?
Yeah, just the assessing data that I received from, oh, my mind just went blank. Who's our city assessor?
Vicki.
Vicki, thank you. That she sent me a couple of months ago. That's one of the things I looked at, where how many assessments would still be under the $100. And we still have, it was over 50% of the households still are under the $100 for the winter bill and that. So we're still saving that. In the past, I think, working with Kyle McKee, who's at the county, we're the only one in the county that does this, because everyone else has other bills. So like, no one else has just the small millages in the winter. So we're really the only ones that, in the county, that have this. So we're kind of unique there. And I think at the time, he looked statewide, and there were only maybe a handful at most that took advantage of that law. And that, so, so it would be an easy change for a representative to go in and say, hey, well, actually, we got three of them.
Yeah.
To go in and say, hey, this would just help us because we do take advantage of this law. And they're on both sides of the aisle, so maybe it's something they can work on together.
Exactly. It's not utilized the whole lot. There shouldn't be a whole lot of objection to it.
Right, exactly.
Now, let's look into it. Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr., you got a pencil up, Mr. Rabello?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I thought that that's a great thing to pursue. And John, I pulled 9G, and I put JC on it because I predicted you were gonna do that, okay?
You get, you get a, you must create a word. Moved by Mr. Karen, supported by Mr. Frederick to approve 9G. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. If you got a problem with the, with the guy, don't call me. Ten, updates and files from prior council meetings. Mr. Lentz?
Mr. Karen requested a more detailed timeline and comprehensive plan regarding the development of the pickleball courts at Kite Monroe. So the response here is gonna be a little bit different than what Chris Ray has actually got back with John earlier today. But the morning after, Rob submitted a request for engineering to start immediately on the project. Once we receive the detailed timeline from the engineer, we will pass that along. Chris Ray is from Hennessy Engineering, will be working on the engineering project. Currently, he's wrapping up a few larger projects with the police and fire. His estimated timeline is shortly after July 1st. Mr. Rabello and Ms. Burgess?
Mr. Karen?
On that, so that's what I was afraid of. Of, we had a donation that came in from the city to do these new pickleball courts. And we're, even though it was being talked about for a few months, fin, you know, the financing was being figured out, you know, city knew about it before budget hearings. And we're not gonna be able to put it out in a bid until mid-July, when we got somebody giving us money to go build something.
Well, no engineering work was done, though. Maybe they talked about, but no engineering work.
We just engineered pickleball courts three years ago, and that's why Mr. Ray is brought involved, because he did it. It's like pull the plans, update the numbers. And that was not, he didn't give us how much the time it would take him to update that big package. He says, I'm busy for the next month. I can't do it. So those are public documents. Can one of the other firms do it faster? In the hopes of maybe it gets in front of us by the mid-July meeting, rather than waiting in the hopes that gets to us in mid-August? Because we might be able to enjoy it in September if we can do it by, in front of us by mid-July.
So your, your goal is to have it mid-July in front of us?
I think, we can, definitely can't do it next, in two weeks, right?
True.
So that would be the next thing out there.
Okay. Mr. Rabello and Ms. Burgess would like to schedule a meeting with Ms. Pike, her view, and discuss the driveway ordinance. A meeting has yet to be scheduled due to the holidays. Although Councilwoman Burgess and Pike had a brief conversation at the fees meeting, and Ms. Pike will reach out to schedule a meeting the second week of June.
Mr. Rabello? Just a little update on that. Linda and myself had a little meeting ourselves, just to sort of how to, you know, how we want to lay the groundwork and so forth. So we will talk amongst ourselves, and we will get, get with you, okay? And then probably get some, some opinions of some others.
All righty.
Mr. Karen requested the formal copies of the proclamations of the grand marshal and veteran of the year for the upcoming Memorial Day Parade. The formal copies of the proclamations were given to the Memorial Day Parade chairman on 5/22 to give to the grand marshal and the veteran of the year. Mr. Karen raised concerns about trash collection issues with Priority Waste. He inquired about how incoming complaints and reports are being catalogued. Additionally, he requested a full month's worth of dump tickets from the recycling trucks to verify where the materials are being disposed of. Please see the two attached documents for the April 2025 from Priority Waste with the dump tickets. Additionally, at that point, the information being passed on to the liaison was actually non-existent. Since then, I think you guys have seen that we started receiving those information, and I've been trying to pass them on late at night when I do receive those via email.
So those weren't going to our staff person?
They had received two in the last four months.
Okay.
And we know they've been missing more than two.
You've gotten three in the last week?
Yes.
Oh, and I did send in some questions, having gone through the scale tickets.
Yep, and I bore that on to be able to finalize what that other truck was missing.
Yeah, I did some spot checking. There's a few discrepancies, mostly on the tire limbs bells, on the tire pounds bells, so on the signatures for the, the one truck, which one of these trucks, none of those tickets have signatures, which is odd.
So I did forward in your questions.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Mr. Vitale noted that the Deutsch traffic error was barely visible when directing traffic. He emphasized the need for improved visibility, citing safety concerns for drivers. Denise sent an email to council on May 20, 2025 with an update, and the email is attached. That is it.
Item 11 is comments by individual council members. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. I will be brief. First off, echo Mayor Walby's thanks to the parade committee and the participants for another wonderful Memorial Day Parade, and thanks to the representatives from the VFW for the lovely memorial service that's held at Veterans Memorial Park on that Memorial Day, Sunday at 9:00 a.m. It's, and to the committee chorus for their wonderful performance at that service. I wish more residents would attend that. That's really what Memorial Day is about, and it's a really nice reminder of, of that. And there's a lot of care and attention put into it. So maybe next year, we could help promote that a little bit. Cool City Committee, fun event, second annual Wine on the Water. Tended with a few of us. It was very nice. And again, a lot of work put into that. I know Linda will be talking more about that, but just wanted to give clues to the committee members. One of the things we do with the Cool City Committee is, we didn't really give them specific task of events. It's not like the parade committee where you say, hey, do the parade activities, cameo fireworks, concerts, that. Cool City Committee kind of has additional challenge of coming up with events, rather than just being given the task of putting non-existing events. And this is another nice one that they've invented and carried through for two years, and hopefully will become attrition. It's a nice event. Following up on my comments at the last meeting about priority, I also brought up some priority comments. And specifically, I think it might be time for us to start pursuing the potential contractual remedies, because we are not getting the service we're paying for. We're paying 100% for the service, and we are not getting 100% service from priority. Not when we have to keep following up on late pickups or missed pickups. And I, I won't go through this again, but it's very frustrating. And I haven't seen a whole lot of acknowledgement from priority about some of the challenges that we face, and our residents facing this level, and the fact that we still are paying 100%, but we're not getting 100% service. So again, let's follow up on that. I didn't make the council updates last time, but maybe we'll make the council updates this time. So we get an update. And finally, good luck to Ms. St. Clair's First Grace Hankey and Ms. St. Clair's First Teen Angela Yonin, heading to the Miss Michigan pageant to compete for the titles of Miss Michigan and Miss Michigan's Teen. The winners of Miss Michigan and Miss Michigan's Teen will go on to Miss America. It's a Miss, our pageant is a Miss America qualifier, which is really cool. So congratulations to Grace and Angelina, and good luck to them in the upcoming Miss Michigan pageants. And if you are a home watching, and you are a woman between the ages of 18 to 27 for Miss, or teen 14 to 18, or you have daughters or granddaughters or friends, now's the time. Look at the Miss St. Clair's First Scholarship Pageant Facebook page. They're looking for contestants. You have to either live, work, or go to school in Macomb County. So it's open to anyone who lives, work, within those ages, who live, lives, works, or goes to school in Macomb County. It's not just for St. Clair's First residents. You're always looking for contestants. You help develop confidence and your performance. You have to perform a talent. You have to give an onstage interview. You interview behind the scenes too. And it's really, I, I'm involved in some of that for some of the contestants. And it's really cool to see how the girls develop their confidence and their interview skills through this program. They could win scholarship money. And again, it's opportunity to go on to Miss Michigan and potentially to the Miss America contest. So please check this out. They're looking for contestants. The pageant is in July. So Miss is open to girls 18 to 27, living, working, going to school in Macomb County. And teen is for girls 14 to 18. Same thing, live, work, or school in Macomb County. So please look into that. It's a really great opportunity. And the sisterhood that develops among the contestants is really cool, too. They definitely made some lifelong friendships there. And they get to develop their skills and their confidence and their poise, which would go beyond the pageant stage to jobs and schools and everything you do afterwards. So it's really great opportunity. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Karen?
Thank you. For, yeah, again, congratulations to the parade committee for an excellent Memorial Day Parade for this year. A lot of work and effort goes into all the, getting the fundraising, getting the lineup all together, getting all the invites out, getting all the acts to come in. A lot of coordination goes into the event. And then just the mass controlled chaos that happens parade day that we've all been through. So greatly appreciate all the hard work by the committee and all the volunteers, and also echo the mayor's comments and a speedy recovery for the four-year-old boy on recovering from the injury from the, the accident that, that unfortunately did occur. And also on that, I do want to give a thank you to Councilwoman Rusi for, after the parade itself, and then even the next day, had done a significant amount of cleanup, expanding her roadside cleanup program to the parade route on top of the other ones that she does in the city. So greatly appreciate that. And, you know, all the committee members appreciate all the cleanup that you did as well. So thank you for that. And we are into the first concert for music on the lake this Wednesday. So a couple of things for that. First off, as part of our discussions with the county on the changes on 9 Mile, in that same call, we talked about the crosswalk that goes across Jefferson at Masonic, and that basically, even though people would hit the button, it would still be two and a half minutes regardless. And so the county actually turned on the button. So now, if you hit it, you're waiting 30 seconds for the light to change, which is great. That means we don't have pedestrians waiting at the corner. When it comes to a lot of pedestrians going across in traffic on Wednesday night going down Jefferson, I don't know what that's gonna do to the Jefferson traffic flow, if all of a sudden that's gonna stop every 30 seconds. So.
There's usually a police officer out there.
Yeah, well, that, that's, yeah. And I wanted to address that as well of, I think that's something that the officers need to be aware of, that they're not gonna be waiting every two and a half minutes to cross people there. That it's gonna be more frequent, and for them to see if that actually works from a traffic flow of the on-demand button actually working, which it hasn't done in the past. So I know the chief is off today. He's back tomorrow, correct? So I will email him and Deputy McAllister to just basically brief the officers to look for that and provide feedback on how that timing has worked and whether that needs to get adjusted, since this is our first big pedestrian event at the park since they made that change. Also on that, as part of the charging station repairs, Denise, they had taken a section of sidewalk out next to the parking lot. And it's fairly close to where people cross, so that does get a lot of traffic. That sidewalk section is still missing. And so basically, people are gonna be forced onto the grass there. Maybe DPW, until they're ready to come back and finish that, can fill that with slag and level it and compact it a bit. So at least that way, we have a non-interrupt- So at least that way, we have a non-interrupted surface on that sidewalk there going into the park, or going towards the park next to the parking lot. I think that would be helpful, especially with the crowd that we expect to come out for Wednesday night for the first concert. And with that, other events are coming up. Saturday, we got June Fest put on by the Nine Mac Merchants Association in downtown, so be sure to check on that. And then also, St. Joan of Arc is doing their summer kickoff, their food truck rally, as well as their annual raffle, and that is on Sunday, June 8th, in the St. Joan of Arc parking lot from 1:00 to 4:00 with the big raffle drawing at 4:00. And with that, I do appreciate DPW going out there and filling all of the joints with cold patch there to prevent any trip hazards on that road, since that's what we're anticipating for this event. So greatly appreciate DPW getting that done. With that, that'll be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick.
Thanks, Mayor. Okay, so you got June Fest in St. Joan already done. We talked about the parade. Dave, you, Pam, Dave, everybody else did fabulous job on the parade this year. I think it was the best-attended parade that we walked on. You know, we talk about the cleanup, you know, Candace did some cleanup. We may, we may have to send Mr.
Did a lot of cleanup.
We may have to send Mr. Babcock to take a look at what, how much candy actually went in the sewers. I really hate it when those kids sit by the sewer and you throw it and you go, oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be interesting to find out how much candy is actually down there sleeping with the fishes, so. Okay, so this Sunday, June 8th, in addition to all the other stuff that's going around on town, got a call from Mike over at Mike's on the Water. He is going to be on MeTV, which is going to be, I think it's Lisa Wetchel. I don't know how to pronounce her name.
That's right. Yep.
Yep, and she is, she's on a show called Collector's Call at 6:30 p.m., and they're going to be featuring Mike's Snoopy collection at Mike's on the Water. It should be pretty interesting. He's got over 15,000 items in there, so I, you know, they might need to do a couple shows on it, but this Sunday, 6:30 p.m. on MeTV, which is on most of the MTV stations that you can get off air. All right, so that's this Sunday.
4.3.
4.3, according to, 4.3 is that what it is?
Yeah, according to the guy that doesn't have cable.
There you go. Okay.
477 if you're on DirecTV.
Okay. You guys, too much. All right, so you guys know, we hand out scholarships every year for the Don Frederick Memorial Scholarship, since he's been, he's been gone 21 years, we're still doing it. This year, I'm going to just read the names. We had, we did two at each school. Denia McLean, who was an awesome basketball player over at Southlake, got a full ride to a black, a black college for basketball. And then Ladarian Andrews, and then Lakeview, you guys are going to love this, Isabel Tizio got one of the awards. So Tony's daughter graduated, and my God, what another great basketball player, and she got so many awards. I mean, it was, it was, they just told her, just stay up here. Stay up here because you got one. And then Brendan Owlesley, who was on the, on the Lakeview baseball team. And then over at Lakeshore, Jack Milstead, and then another name that we might know, Tommy Ahern, awesome ball players, both of them. So we, we were able to give out six scholarships this year, so that's just a testament to this, to this community, using tents, tables, and chairs and helping us to fund that. Now, in the process, you get to meet some other people who are handing out scholarships as well, and two of the other scholarship offers, charitable offerings, come from the Austin Lipscomb Memorial and the James Bush Memorial. Both these, these kids were killed out of high school, and you know, we've all, we all know, knew the kids and all that. Anyway, they, they are having a field day, and it's a fundraiser on Saturday, June 28th at Lakeshore High School. 30 bucks gets you a t-shirt, a raffle ticket, a commemorative bracelet. You can participate in, in one or both of the events. Field day at 11 o'clock, check-in begins, and then 12 o'clock start. And then also, there's sponsorship opportunities if you wanted to buy a sponsorship. So I'm going to give you a phone number to contact April at 586-295-5321, 586-295-9321. And this is for the field day at Lakeshore High School on June 28th, and they can give you all the sponsorship details. There's some, there's some mini sponsors for 150 bucks, all the way up to event sponsor top line at 1,500. So they do a great job. I, you know, I've been handing out scholarships with these folks for probably about the last, I want to say 10 years, I think, from when it happened, and oh my God, they're just, they're emotional, and they do, and the parents do a good job with that, so. Saturday, June 7th, at Blossom Heath, the Lock St. Clair Kiwanis will be doing a free fishing weekend tied into the state's free fishing weekend, where, so that means no license required. This will be for any seniors, and when I say seniors, I don't mean in high school. I mean seniors. What's our new word for seniors? Because I.
I don't know.
Aging citizens.
Aging citizens, okay. Anyway, you can, they're going to provide equipment. This will be out at the pier. They'll provide equipment as well as bait for any seniors out at Lake St. Clair. And then after that, you can actually borrow the equipment to do it again, so. And, and then you can, after that, everybody can head over to Trader Todd's for the art, where art fair thing, so. Also wanted to mention that the Optimus Golf Outing is going to be on Friday, July 11th. If you want to get a foursome together, or if you want to sponsor a hole, or some of the other sponsorships, call me. That's Ron Frederick, 586-808-3478, 586-808-3478. It's going to be at the St. Clair's Country Club. Check in early, 9 o'clock start, and it's a great day, tons of prizes. Mr. Rubello does his magic, and we end up with a significant amount of gifts because of our great businesses in town that, that support the Optimus Golf Outing, which by the way, provides scholarships for, for kids. And then relative to the, to priority, I think I get more calls from priority than any other individual topic. In fact, today, this morning, I got a call from somebody who, over on Avalon, they were throwing, the people were throwing stuff into the recycle truck, and it was glass, and they missed, broke all over the street, and just left it. So I, you know, and, and Justin, as you told us, call Dan directly if we have to. I called him, and he said he'd get, he would take a look at the video and then send somebody over. Hadn't been done yet from the, since I came to council today, so we just want to follow up with that if we can. And last but not least, did you miss me last meeting? No, no library announcements. Come on. All right, so we got some short ones. Seventh Annual St. Clair's Literary Walk by the Lake will be held on June 21st at noon at Blossom Heath. The library is pleased to announce the Summer Reading will kick off on June 16th with a special event from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. This will be your first chance to register for Summer Reading, Mr. Mayor. Receive your activity sheet and learn about all the exciting events this year. And then the Suburban Library Cooperative of 2025 Library Passport launched today. Visit any member library to grab your passport and travel across the cooperative to collect stamps and unlock prizes. It's a fun way to explore new libraries and see the full range of resources, spaces, and services available to you. And that'll just get you like what Candace, like what Candace and I did studying for the, for the construction. Visiting a bunch of libraries, very good. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale.
Do we have a study session date? I don't know if the email went out, was asking us which of two dates, but I don't know if we ever got one back saying which one.
I'll talk about it right after this meeting to set the date officially.
Oh, okay, then I didn't miss that email. We do have backyard chickens on there as a topic.
That is correct.
Do we have TNR on there, trap neuter release as a topic?
We can add that.
Mr. Rubello and I talked about it. And I, you know, I don't know if, I want to just add things to there, but it had kind of occurred to me that when we, administratively, back when Ms. Stall was on this board, we started having residents speak first before the council members took a vote, and I thought that was a great idea, and in 2020, codified it with a charter amendment that the voters passed, 98% agreed with that. And going to planning and realizing how much, first of all, would have cut the meeting down, and how much better the plan could have come out the first time around, I realized that we should cascade that down to all of our committees, because we do it as a city council, covering a wide variety of topics, and I can only think of one or two times in the, maybe three times in the years that I've been up here, where we really had a huge turnout for that, that slowed the meeting down, but all those points being valid, everyone having the right to speak. We should be doing this on all our committees. And I mean, maybe it should be a charter amendment so that when we're gone, it stays that way. But it really, they spent, I don't know, half an hour talking about how to locate benches so people wouldn't get killed on the small space that they were going to use as a pocket park, when in reality, the solution was right there, which was just to make a larger green space area and not have to worry about where we placed benches and things like that. And so the futility of that kind of crossed my mind. Now that we're assembled as a full body, I want to talk about it, and maybe I'll end up bringing it up again as a charter amendment. But I think that would really help with a lot of our boards and commissions. Back to boards and commissions and TNR, is our TNR, or, excuse me, our Animal Welfare Committee, do we have a president?
I think they resigned, and right now, they're working on it, and I know Linda's working on the whole thing.
Okay. Well, I've got to say that it was suggested to me, and do we have, do we have an update on the cat situation?
I do.
Animal Welfare Committee is.
Ms. Burgess?
Okay, well, I meant administrative.
So the Animal Welfare Committee, I can tell you Denise has been working with. Denise, you want to give an update with it?
Norma Foster has been working with Mr. Stoner on his code enforcement issues, and I've been working with Chief Randazzo. We have a meeting this Wednesday morning, so it will be the chief, Mr. Stoner, myself, Norma, and a person from the KG Foundation.
Okay, so the work goes on, essentially. Yeah. Linda, was there something?
She'll probably give it to you when it comes to her job.
Okay. You know, and it was suggested to me that perhaps, this might be a good time, lacking a president, to, and then I talked to Linda about this, to maybe restructure Animal Welfare Committee as one of our city committees that we actually hear from. And by that, I'm thinking about like Waterfront Environmental Committee, they have an annual signature event every year. Parade has a fundraising, several different fundraising and things like that. The primary thing that we're hearing from the trap neuter release is that the money is not there to do the neutering. So why don't we have a committee that does a fundraising effort? We could maybe have a, an annual car wash where they raise money to be able to pay for the TNR neuters, so that it actually gets it done. And I think that that committee should sanction the homes that are approved TNRs, and that that would kind of keep a lot of the amateurs out who aren't really doing it the right way. The same way we're talking about regulating backyard chickens, similar vein of thought. So I want to mention that in front of the full group while we're all assembled, because I've kind of had these conversations privately with a number of you, and I just think that's, that's the kind of committee that that should become. Jackie Kalen was the person who I drove in the city parade, a very interesting person. I was to drive General Slocum from Sulphage, but I think he had to call in an airstrike, and he didn't make it, and so I had Jackie instead. But the nice thing about driving someone new is, you know, they, she had nothing but compliments. You know, she'd been to the city before, but she lives in West Bloomfield, and she was just, couldn't believe like what a nice, clean city it was, how wholesome it felt, all the children that were in the audience. She said like really felt like going back in time to her, and I kind of feel the same way about that, too, to a better time. So I just thought she'd like to know those were some of the observations from someone living outside the city.
Nice.
So that was all I had.
Thank you. Ms. Burgess?
Okay, a couple of things here. I really wanted to cut it short, and then you've added something on there I wasn't going to talk about today, but it's okay. Our Cool City Wine on the Water was just an amazing event. It was months in the planning, our second annual. We are going to keep it as our signature event, and it was just a huge, huge success. We had over 300 people. I had the opportunity to go to every single table, every single bar top that we had there and talk with them, and took pictures, and everybody was just having a fantastic time, and I'm just so proud of our committee and what they've done. There was a point where I didn't think Cool City was going to make it, and our committee has just flourished, and we've got a lot of good things planned. One, which is going to be our annual garage sale. It's our third annual garage sale, and it's going to take place August 15th through the 17th. And if you guys want more information, you need to go on to our Cool City Facebook page, and updates will be there and let you know exactly what is needed to be done really soon. I think within the next couple of weeks, registration will be open for that. Blessing of the Fleet is this Saturday, 10:00 a.m. at Watermark Restaurant, a great start to the summer season, the Blessing of the Fleet, Blessing of the Boats, and we have some good speakers, and it's going to be a great time. So 10:00 a.m. at the Watermark, excuse me. Just wanted to bring up really briefly again, if you guys have not made it out to the Veterans Gallery Art Show that is happening this weekend as well. It is an amazing event. We had Joe here talking about it. Please check it out. You can go on Facebook to the Project Brotherhood Resolve and find out more information about that as well. And the Orbison's are going to be there on Sunday, and that's like one of the, one of the greatest groups in our city, and I just love them, and they're amazing. So, let's see. Dave and I had a chance to go down, if you want to show those pictures, to the beach Revitalization Project. It was absolutely amazing. So this is what you see, brand-new beach there, really, and they were actually laying out the grass seed. I wanted to ask, we have our first Music on the Lake coming up on Wednesday. Are we going to block this area off?
Absolutely. We already talked to Tom Mallon, they'll put a double stake in there to make sure that hopefully no one walks on it. Will someone walk on it? Probably.
Yeah, just beautiful. I mean, I'm just extremely happy about it. There's Dave and I just getting our picture taken, and I did take some pictures of this. Oh, there's George. George has an amazing job down there, and just, he's so proud of Veterans Memorial Park. He's one of our city workers. And then the picture of kind of the park views that I did, this place is phenomenally, I mean, it's just so well-kept, updated, just all the things that they've done just recently, and I'm just so proud of it, and I can't wait for Wednesday to kick it off with the Music on the Water. So that's just a really kudos to Rob and the whole staff there at the Parks and Recs. So make sure you come out to Music on the, Music on the Lake this Saturday, I mean, sorry, this Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. It's going to be great. And to talk about animal care and welfare, I've been working with, one of the people on Rose Brier, been working with one of the residents there, and we have mobilized with the help of Denise, who sent me out all the applications for everybody to fill out. We have 10 applications, and I'm probably going to get those turned in tomorrow for Macomb County to come out and set the traps. These 10 forms that were done by the neighbors are release forms for the animal control to come in and set the traps, and then they will come in, they will pick them up as they're trapped. So that is great news that we're actually seeing some stuff happening there. And as far as what you talked about, I did, I have spoke a little bit with mayor and with the committee, and we do not have a chair right now, and that's something we'll work on in the next couple of months, but what we really are doing is we're kind of going to be redoing the whole thing, coming up with a new mission statement, and, and also meeting times are going up with a new mission statement and, um, and also meeting times are going to be probably moved to once a month instead of, uh, you know, every other month. Just a lot of good things are going to start happening to make sure that this is moving along and that, um, you know, it just isn't a lot of talk, but we're going to put some stuff into action. And, um, I did take a lot of your advice, taking some advice from a lot of other people and how to move this forward. But I really am excited that something's going to be taking place really soon with these release forms and getting some traps set there. And, uh, I think, uh, I think that's it.
Thank, thank you. Mr. Rubello?
Thank you, Mayor. I heard a lot of talk about the parade. Our parade committee did an amazing job this year. Can't do it without the support of the residents, the businesses who, who patronize us and, uh, and our city council here, including the mayor. Uh, he can't throw a, uh, a parade like that without everyone pushing in the same direction. Beautiful weather, um, I don't know, it may have been a record crowd. I think it, I think it was, uh, best parade that I've ever seen. So God bless the parade committee for a wonderful job.
You had a great announcer there.
I was, I was gonna, I was gonna get them. Bob, I don't know, and Debbie, I don't know how many years, but, oh, they count on seeing you. They love you.
It's a great honor.
Okay. Um, faces in the crowd real quick. Okay. The parade, there's a parade shot, uh, my wife, what, oh, come back a little bit. My wife is on the far right, she's the Daughters of the American Revolution, said it was an ama, it was an amazing crowd. Is that correct? Okay. Anyways, amazing, amazing crowd.
Wow.
Uh, of just the, the people were incredible.
If you don't know, we wouldn't know.
Okay.
He doesn't have his glasses.
All right, let's move on. Okay. Uh, you guys, uh, the Parks and Rec, a beautiful, uh, movie in the, in the parking lot at Veterans Memorial Park last weekend. The people loved it. One of the great things that we do in St. Clair Shores, just maybe in the future, we announce them a little bit more, but there was a heck of a lot of people there. Okay. And there's our boys over there. They wanted me to do this. St. Clair Shores, great spot to meet people. This is East Side Bagel and they all said hi. They love how the city's going. Okay. They think we're all doing a good job. That was your overall opinion of those five or six guys. And the Lakeside Pallet Club Spring Show, opening reception. Can you, can you read that for me?
June 13th.
June 13th. Okay.
5:30 to 7:30.
The Pallet Club is just an incredible, I don't have my glasses, the Pallet Club is just an incredible group of people. We welcomed them to our parade, uh, this year. Thanks for coming, Pallet Club.
Trader Todd's.
Okay. And that's going to be at Trader Todd's. Okay. They, they've been there for a number of years. And Dr. Brian Hunt loves what we're doing with our city. He is a dentist. He's on Jefferson Avenue and, uh, he is not being affected by the, um, construction there. So, uh, good news from Dr. Hunt. Okay.
It's coming.
Well, he's, it's funny, by the time he's, by the time you get to his place, he's moving into another building, um, on the other side where Patrick Lepenzi is. So he's going into that building. So I think he's going to mix it. Great guy, loves the city, wants to pass along to us. We're doing a great job. And, uh, that's Angie. She moved into the city. Angie's Toys, she's, she moved into town here and, uh, she's looking forward. She has, she finally has a, uh, a brick and mortar moved out of her basement. Does a lot of great things for the kids in cooperation with the Marines. Lots of bikes. She wants to have a thousand bikes this year to give the kids for Christmas. Does that, and the, the music on the lake coming soon. It's an event for family, friends, uh, of all ages. And that's coming on Wednesday. So, all right, and just a couple of quick things here. What's that?
That's your mom.
That was my mom. Yep, yep, yep. She, she used to have a good time at it. But, uh, again, something for all ages we're doing here in St. Clair Shores. Um, real quick, Priority Waste, uh, I'd like to, at least on Friday, maybe we can get some updates for the following week so we know what to expect. Because we are feeling a lot of calls and, uh, if we give people a heads up, if they're a day behind on this or that, uh, it's not a bad idea for, to let people know that. So Dustin, can you put a call into, uh, Priority Waste and see if we can get a Friday updates for the following week?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think it's just going to be hard for them to be able to tell that they're running a week behind. I mean, most of the time when we are getting those emails late at night, it's one or two blocks that are remaining that they couldn't get to. So there's, they're going to do their best to continue to keep up with the current usage. Being telling a resident that they're going to be a full day behind is probably not going to be, it's not going to happen. But yeah, I would do the best I can to continue to forward their information.
All we can do is the best and just reach out to people and try to let them know, you know, what the score is. Uh, Michigan Fantasy Fest is coming to the VFW Hall. They were at our parade, had a great time. Uh, they're, they're, the festival is June 14th through 15th. Again, after VFW post at Martin Road and Jefferson. Uh, congratulations, St. Nye's Jokes, uh, champions. Is it the CYO Mayor? You were there.
Yep.
The CYO, great game.
It's great girls softball.
Yep. They beat St. Joan 2 to 1. Uh, great game.
It was.
And, um, June 14th, the drones come to downtown St. Clair Shores. We had an incredible show last year during one of the social districts. Uh, this one, uh, is to celebrate Flag Day. This is on June 14th. It's an amazing thing, uh, that we all brought to St. Clair Shores last year and it was a, it was a favorite. So looking forward to that. That'll start at dusk, again, during a social district Saturday, June 14th.
And the sponsors are?
The sponsors are, Party Waste.
No. Shores?
Nope.
Shores Inn.
Shores Inn, I'm sorry, the Shores Inn, the St. Clair Shores Activities Committee and the St. Clair Shores Cool Cities.
That's who sponsored it.
Committee.
Correct.
Those are the three major sponsors to what will be Metro Detroit's greatest spectacle that anyone's ever going to see on that weekend and looking so forward to it. So.
What if we paid for activities for that?
2,500, 2,500, 5,000 came from Shores and so $10,000 for the entire drone show.
Yes. So thank you for all those who contributed on those committees and, and worked hard to bring that to us. And, uh, Chris brought up a little bit earlier, um, about the, uh, you know, some of the issues and stuff that we're facing at, at some of the parks, uh, one of the parks anyways in particular. And maybe, I think he brings up a good point, that we take a closer look at, um, the response and, and how we respond to them. I know they can only do their best, uh, but some people, you know, who are mad, up the ante on them. So I'm just interested in their safety and maybe we can look at that. Um, it seems we only had one really major incident, but, um, we don't need a second one either. And that's it, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Item 12 is the city manager report.
Uh, just around your part, Blossom, as we, sorry, Veterans Park with the beach. Uh, Paul actually texted me while we were here. All the seed and straw is now also officially done, so it is completely done and they will be staking it tomorrow.
Excellent. Item 13 is audience participation, you have a five-minute time limit. Views, opinions expressed under audience participation are those of the individual citizen only and do not necessarily represent the views and opinions of the mayor, city council administration, St. Clair Shores. Anyone would like to speak? Anyone? Yes, sir. Come on up. We just need your name. Come on. And then the name and the city you reside in. And then, um, the finance director and the treasurer over there, John Walters, will show you where to sign in after you speak. You can speak first, sir, and then you'll sign in after. We just need your name and the city you reside in. Good evening.
Good evening. I've never been to one of these meetings before, so I got educated tonight.
Alrighty.
And it's warm in here, but I'm sure you guys want to get out of here, but, um, I'm here tonight for our local firefighters, St. Clair Shores. I got a story that I'd like to share with you guys.
Yes, sir. Your name?
My name is Maurice Fadoul. I live on, uh, 33716 Jefferson here in St. Clair Shores. I've been a resident of the city for, uh, 16 years. I'm standing here today because of the horrific actions of our city firefighters, literally because on September 3rd, 2022, I, uh, I dropped dead. It was a Saturday morning around 7:30 AM. I was talking with my wife, suddenly my heart failed, just like that, called 911, instructed, uh, the family to start chest compressions. Thankfully, my family was with me and my son-in-law began CPR immediately. Then the firefighters and police arrived and they took over. I had no pulse for 20 minutes. During that time, those firefighters did absolutely everything they could. They used every tool, every skill, every bit of determination they had to bring me back. Somehow they did. After 20 minutes, they found a faint pulse. They held on to it, rushed me to the hospital. Because of them, I'm alive today. I got to go home, hug my wife, got to see my four daughters, my two son-in-laws and tell them how much I love them. I got a second chance because they never gave up on me. I also have a grandson. Because of them, I get to spend time with him. I get to watch him grow. Those moments, those memories, they exist because of the St. Clair Shores firefighters gave me a second chance at life. We often call them heroes, but, uh, we must back that title with real respect and respect means fair, competitive compensation. These men and women face life and death every day. They give us their best when we're at our worst. I'm one of the city's large taxpayers on Jefferson. I say this not to boast, but to underscore how deeply I care about the well-being and safety of our community, something we all have a stake in. I'm asking you today, please make sure the city of St. Clair Shores is competitive with our cities, especially nearby cities, when it comes to firefighters' pay and benefits. Let's not lose the people who protect us simply because another city values them more. I'm asking you today, please give them what they've earned. Let their pay reflect their value. I'm living proof that what they do matters. Thank you, guys.
Great. I'm, I'm glad that, uh, it worked out. They did a great job and, uh, we are, we are proud of our St. Clair Shores Fire Department. We've been proud of them for, for a long time. And, and not to say, we've had other ones actually have come up here that have said that over the years. So, uh, it's just fantastic and thank the Lord that you, uh, survived and the great fire department. We appreciate that.
Thank you. They're amazing. You, you think they're just firefighters, they're not.
No, no, we know that.
They're amazing.
For sure.
Let's look after them.
Yep, they care deeply about the community. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? We'll go back to Mayor's comments. Oh, that's not it. That's the wrong thing.